We don't know what happened, it just automatically.
Yeah, I didn't even see it.
No thanks, we gotta get started. The problem I asked. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission, June 5th, 2018. I'd like to have Mr. Commissioner Passiak lead us in the pledge.
Pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Here.
Commissioner Welker.
Here.
Commissioner Bacon.
Here.
Commissioner McGafferty.
Here.
Commissioner Meters.
Here.
Metters, sorry. Vice Chair Passiak.
Here.
Chair Merritt.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which are consideration of possible action to approve May 1st, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept last meeting's minutes as published.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Jason, staff reports.
Thank you Chair, members of the commission. Just a couple of brief items for you tonight. We've been quite busy. We've had some, a recent meeting on Village North project. As you know, those were the apartments that were approved behind the Safeway. We had a feasibility meeting last week, no, two weeks ago. There's a proposal by the landowner to try to facilitate development of a mobile home park and self-storage. So that may be coming back in front of you as a rezoning case, because they'll have to do a rezoning, because it's a planned area development. We've gotten a couple preliminary plat applications in. The first, our technical review meeting for JC Villas, as you recall, the court of honor property, they're proceeding with a preliminary plat. Indications are they'll follow what was, what you've seen through the zoning case. Lastly, we have a preliminary plat application in. I may have already told you this in my last update, but for 172 one-acre lots just north of Bright Star, it's called Century Ranch, and it's a Jim Fletcher development. So that pre-plat should be coming before you in the next couple of months.
Excellent.
And I know we're not on the item yet, but I did want to clarify a couple of items, and I've been in discussion with, with you Chair. The two items that are on tonight were inadvertently placed under discussion items rather than public hearing. The properties were publicly noticed for a public hearing tonight, as well as the signs. So we can have a full discussion tonight, not like the study session, but we can have a large discussion, interact. The public is here to speak, it's clearly a contentious project, as we all know, based on the last few meetings we've had. I would suggest that we have these full meetings tonight, give this P and Z a chance to let the dust settle, reconcile all of the comments tonight, rather than push you into having to make a recommendation, which we can't make anyways. It actually gives us some breathing room and contemplation. It might have felt a little rushed to swallow this whole project in one bite. So for those that are here, we are proposing, and we'll need to clear it with you, a special meeting on the 13th. Same time, same place, that is Wednesday, not Tuesday, this room is occupied Tuesday next week. But it would be for Wednesday night if we can make quorum. But I think that, again, in retrospect, it helps the applicant understand what your concerns will be, the public's concerns, and they can address those before you'd make a recommendation. So it gives them a week to kind of settle down and think through it. Same goes for the, the other project that's on tonight, which is the food truck. That one would be for, we can do the presentation tonight, and then we'll throw it on the agenda for the special meeting if you so wish.
Okay, so do we need to move to, move the, move this to the next, to that special meeting for action?
I would suggest, yes, we'll want to formally continue it to date in time. So I would suggest that after we have the discussion, you move to continue the item for public hearing to June 13th at 6:00 PM. So that really gives everyone here a chance to get up and talk. And thinking about it, I don't want the public to appear that this project is feeling rushed. I will admit, staff has received a significant amount of pressure from the applicant to push this along, they pushed this along. We're trying to give everybody a chance to look at it. And if you want revisions to it, if you want to change something on the elevations or the site plan, this gives you a little bit more room for them to get at least a week to bet that out and see what they can do, if that's where it goes. I've, you know, I've spoken with them, I don't believe they're even in the, they're in the room, some of them, the rest of them are not. They're not happy about not having a public hearing tonight, but I think at the end of the day, it serves everybody a benefit to have a little more time.
So it must be a fortuitous set of events.
It should be, thank you. So it kind of was an error that I think is going to work out for the best, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, for my own justification, it's because it wasn't posted as a public hearing item.
On the agenda only.
It was published as a discussion item, we're going to hold off until next Wednesday.
Yes, I spoke with the legal counsel about, you know, should we redo the whole thing? And she says, in her legal opinion, the items were written correctly as discussion items in there. You see, it says, not as discussion items, but it says consideration and possible action as though it's a public hearing item. It's under the wrong subheading. That said, everything has been posted otherwise as a public hearing tonight, so we can continue to date time specific as soon as next week.
Okay, well, I don't see any need to jam everybody up here, unless the commission has any thoughts on it.
No, 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 I believe we can take public comments tonight. I think it's important, actually, to get the public comments tonight, so you as a commission and the public, and the applicant can hear everything on the table all at once from all sides. And then they get a, you guys get a week to reconcile that. The applicant gets a week to say, hey, what can we do, if anything, to change our project? And then can continue the discussion on the 13th for as long as you wish. The public can respeak if they wish, based on whatever might be changed or proposed by the applicant, if any changes are requested. And then you can, you take a motion, I think that better suits everybody, you'll be more informed.
Thank you.
Jason, I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. When we had this as a study session the first time, was it publicly advertised at that time, so the public could attend?
Chair and Commissioner Bacon, for study session items, it's agendized, but we don't send out public notices. So that's why we didn't want to take public comment, because the public hadn't been noticed through letters and the sign. We, staff presented to you information, so you have some time to digest it and make some initial comments to the applicant. But because the neighborhoods have been noticed, actually, they've been noticed twice now, we'd hoped to bring it forward in May, but it was not ready. So it's coming forward to you now in June. I can go into more discussion when, we're not on the item yet, so I just want to be careful not to go too far. I'm trying to discuss the agenda, so.
Okay.
If you don't mind, maybe I should address it when you open up the discussion items.
That'd be great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move to item six, public hearing. We have no items listed under that heading, so we will move forward from there. Item seven, non-public action, non-public hearing action items, which there is nothing under that subheading, Jason?
That is correct, Chair.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move to item eight, discussion items, meaning that we will not be taking any action tonight on these items. And we will start with item 8A, and I'm going to say consideration and no possible action regarding a request to rezone 6.85 acres of real property, generally located 1,400 feet west of State Route 89 and 620 feet south of West Road 2 North, at 740 West Road 1 North, from MR1, multi-family residential, residential, one-acre minimum zoning district to an MR1 with a PAD, multiple-family residential, one-acre minimum zoning district with a planned area development overlay zoning district to modify the density development standard in the MR1 zoning district. Jason?
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. I did note that the applicant's not in the room. Is she coming?
I'm here as a citizen of Chino Valley, not as a representative.
Okay, the project engineer's here, but he's not as the applicant. So I guess we'll proceed. The applicant is outside, I believe, still discussing the project with her client. We had a brief discussion before this meeting about the, the agenda item tonight, so I'll go ahead and get started. I know you've seen this project before, you had study session, the applicant submitted their application to the town of Chino Valley on March 1st, so about March, April, May, three months ago. We brought it almost immediately to the commission for study session. We thought that the project was unique and a sufficient size and scope that it warranted the extra discussion. The intention of tonight's meeting is to go further than we did then. At that time, we did a soft touch on it, as you know, it was an informational item, but it's been publicly advertised, we're all here tonight, we can take public commentary, and we can all interact and ask questions to really bet this project, again, as I said, and then take action in about eight days from now, which is pretty accelerated considering. So I'll go ahead and show you the project details. It's referred to as Brook Apartments, PAD, not Brooks Apartments, which I keep saying, so correct me already if I'm wrong. The property is about 6.85 acres, and it's just, you can kind of tell on the aerial, if you read aerials well, it's west and south of the Walgreens over at 2 North, and it's almost due south, a little south and west of the Heritage, I'm just using the Hoxnest Development, that I'll show you in a different slide, and then an undeveloped commercial subdivision that you'll see to the north. So it's kind of unique, that it doesn't have frontage right on Road, I'm sorry, Road 1 North. Is that correct? Road 1 North? And it's 2 North, it's, yeah, it's 2 North, I have it memorized. So they'll need to construct a street, actually, to connect that property to 2 North, and you'll see that in the site plan. That, you can see that streets for the commercial subdivision have already been dedicated, they've just never been improved, because the development hasn't happened yet. You can see the property outlined in blue here, it's kind of spun at an angle, so you can get some context on it. You can see the two single-family homes at about it, nearly three down to the south. Those neighbors were present, and in generally, not in, certainly not in support of the project, based on the density and other concerns at the neighborhood meeting. I've not spoken with them since, but I do know that, I've asked the applicant, who's responsible for the citizen review process, to reach out to them, and she says that she has. So I believe if she comes in here, she'll be able to give you an update on what those conversations were. The property to the east, used to be part of a larger parcel attached to this, but it split off several years ago, and the owner of that property is also here tonight. She had her own concerns and has subsequently met with staff to discuss those.
Oh, you mean to the west?
West, yes, I'm looking at it upside down, kind of, too. So here we go, you can see the zoning on the properties MR1, it was zoned multi-family back in 2006, I believe, 2006. So it's been sitting vacant with multi-family zoning on it for quite some time. I would like to clarify to everyone here that this is indeed a rezoning case. It was stated in public at the neighborhood meeting by the applicant that it is not a rezoning case, and it is indeed a rezoning case. Whenever you are adding a planned area development overlay on top of the zoning, you're really creating a custom new zoning district. And the intent of this case is to create a custom zoning district for this property to allow the density that they're proposing. So it's adopted by ordinance, and it's a zoning case. You can see the adjacent zonings nearby are SR1, which is relatively low-density residential. It's south of a commercial subdivision, and it's in the community core, the largest community core we have, so it's typically comprised of denser housing, commercial, intense commercial uses with excellent access to particularly the 89, or any one of our arterials such as Road 2 North. You can see here, we wanted to give you kind of a context, a lot of people have been asking questions, well, don't we already have apartments approved? Where are they approved? How many units? I wanted to clarify that with this image here, so you can see the Hoxnest Development to the north. 15 acres of that project was rezoned to, it's a multi-family project, it's about 15, 16 units per acre, which is just around what MR1 zoning would allow by right as, as it is. It has not developed, I believe it's still retained under ownership by Mandala Homes. They've talked about doing other things here, we were going to do some senior housing, they've talked about doing lower density. We've talked with the potential single-family home developer for the single-family lots that are, that were left behind, they're looking at building, but we're not certain yet. I don't know where those discussion points are with them. But we talked probably about a month ago, they're still interested in doing, uh, single-family housing on the residual portion of that large property. Over there at Village North Planary Development, I gave you a quick update from before, as I said in the report from staff, that that developer for the apartments that led that cause for that rezoning case has fallen out of escrow, gone away, not involved anymore. So the landowners would still like to proceed with development, but as I said, they'd like to do a mobile home park, kind of like a country west, somewhat higher-end, the little, you know, with amenities, you know, certain size of, of units to keep it up, all of them would have carports and porches, and then they want to do some mini storage and RV storage. So staff had a meeting with them, they may come in, they will require a rezoning application, so all of that would come back before you. As well, the Hoxnest Development would also have to come back before you, because what they're proposing to do is does not conform with the exhibits approved through the PAD. So this project is down on the left corner, 192 proposed units on 6.8 acres, that's a pretty big increase in density, it's going up to about 28 units per acre from what's allowed, so it's about a 90% increase. Other than that, we'll go through the development standards, they've met or exceeded every other development standard in, in the code book, so they've provided significant buffering, which I'll get to later.
Yeah.
Can we clarify, please, under Brook Apartments, it says 192 units and four structures in three four-story buildings. Should be four.
Backwards.
Is that? Four doors.
Oh, if you, if you don't mind, if we could strike the word four from that, it's in, it's in four structures and three-story buildings.
We were having heard of that.
Oh, no, it didn't go up any higher, guys, just, thank you for catching that, I appreciate that. It's funny how you can read the same thing three times and not catch a typo.
Yes, that's true.
Especially when, I mean, today's been quite busy, I'll be honest, we've been, things have been changing by the moment, trying to keep up. All right, all right, so this is the black line site plan, I mean, not everybody can really read a site plan, but I can kind of walk everyone through it. So that little street knob that you see in the top right corner there, that would be that access street through the commercial subdivision that's not yet developed, that would be the street that they would have to build out to connect to 2 North. So this is just the property itself. You can see the four buildings, one's tilted at an angle with open space along 2 North. The three other buildings are clustered to the south, they all have about 80 to 90-foot setbacks from any adjacent property lines, whereas only 10 and 20 feet are required. So they've tried to center the buildings in the center of the site to get them further away from the property lines, it also works out well for them for the circulation aspect of it. Oh, the setbacks, what a setback is, is it's the required distance that the building be built from the property line. And so our code outlines that for the MR1 district. The footage of what? Oh, depending on which property line, it's 10 feet and 20 feet, and they provided 90 feet on, I think, all three sides. The west side property line is a bit larger, because they have a retention, you can see that little retention corridor all the way to the north. I apologize, I can't, we can't do it, I know where you guys are going with this, if you can reserve your comments, what you will do is, when he opens it up for public comment, go ahead and state everything, I'll be taking notes, then I can be brought back up to respond, but we can't interact, not like the study session, sorry, so, that we had before. Let me see here, so we've got the site plan up there with the four buildings, you can see the parking has been evenly distributed throughout. The primary amenity areas and the little triangle piece up near the entrance, so that when you arrive at the development, the first thing you'll see is their little park space with the gazebo and barbecue. Other gazebos have been provided between the buildings on the south side, you can see three and four, those two little squares where you've got that curvilinear walkway are the other Ramadas. And then they've got some passive open space and a trail, you can see the kind of trail meandering around the perimeter of the project on the west and the south. This is a elevation drawing of the buildings, clearly, they're three stories, they do not exceed the allowed building height in the district. There's a lot of concern, there continues to be concern about three stories versus two stories. Oh, thanks. You can see that they've done some indulation with the roof lines, but the, the buildings are large, they're interior access, so the openings on each eye, on each end will provide corridors. There wouldn't be individual doors or access points from the exterior of the building along the units, as in some apartment complexes. Everything's indoors, including most of the amenities, they've got indoor amenities, I'll go through in a bit, but all of the access doors to the units are from the inside, and there's a mix of one and two-bedroom units. This just kind of outlines the square footage of each of the floors, total square footage, lot coverage and floor area ratios. They're at about 19% lot coverage, which is well within the allowed limits of the MR1 district, and then they've got 169,000 total square feet of building area. Signage for the project is minimal, there'll be an entry sign, and then building signage and directional signage. It's pretty standard for these types of projects, so they can identify which buildings are which, and then have a decorative entry sign, which I have a picture of for you. And that's it right there, so that's what you'd see when you come into the development. The colors and materials of the sign match those that are proposed for the elevations of the buildings. So here's the conceptual landscape plan, you can see more clearly where that open space is based on its coloring. Of course, the gray areas are where your parking and your drive aisles are, that's the darker grayish brown, the bright, light gray is the rooftops, and then the green and yellow areas are the landscape areas. Now, in meeting with the public, they were very upset about the lack of, they felt, I think, buffering or separation between them, this is to the homes to the south. Since the neighborhood meeting, the applicant doubled the landscape buffer from 10 feet to 20 feet, they're now proposing a six-foot masonry wall. And then staff wanted, had asked for a double row of evergreen trees offset, so you basically have a zigzag of trees to create a green wall. The applicant did not agree to that, staff is sticking to it. We said, if you want any staff support, we want to see two rows of trees, I've done this before, I know how to do a green wall, that's how you do it. So we've actually conditioned the project with a second row of evergreen trees, they haven't said that they're going to dispute it yet or not, they can, they can make that case tonight.
Excuse me, ma'am, let's let Jason finish with his report, and then everybody will get an opportunity to speak.
And then I also met with them to clarify the fencing on the west side of the project, adjacent to the property owner that just spoke, who certainly she's going to get up and make a statement. They're going to offer to do a chain link style fencing, and their landscaping over there, that chain link style fencing is intended, and we can discuss whether it's sufficient or not when the public speaks, to separate the prospective residents, particularly children, from reaching their hands and arms through the fence to where her horses are, might be, and she's concerned about a liability for that purpose. Split rail wasn't going to cut it, because it's too open, so they thought they'd do the chain link. We talked about doing tubular steel, it might be more attractive, but there was concern that the animals or somebody could get their legs stuck in between the slats of the steel, so we can address that when the public speaks, if they'd like to talk about that. But that's what's proposed right now. The indoor amenities include, and this was specifically addressed at the study session, what amenities are they going to be, there was a concern that there were not sufficient amenities for the number of units. So we've got laundry room facilities on the first and second floors of each building, but they also provide common rooms in each building for indoor activities, that would include exercise fitness center on Building 4, a couple different types of game rooms in Building 3 and Building 2, and then Building 1 will have a flex space for, begin to use for gatherings or meetings or those sorts. And they're off, they're offered to all residents, regardless of what building you live in, you can interchange whatever amenities you want to use. That's in addition to the outdoor amenities that we talked about before, and then that you saw in the landscape plan, but to kind of, you know, write them out. We're talking about the triangular park located between Building 1 and 2, as you come into the entry, it's going to have a barbecue seating, outdoor seating, lawn area, and a bocce ball cart, along with the gazebo. The detention area is kind of the largest area, it's going to be more of a passive space where people could walk, that's that big triangular piece up in the corner. That's where somebody could maybe take their dog for a walk, and let them stretch their legs, and then they're going to have exercise stations be provided between Buildings 3 and 4, where those other two gazebos were. So since then, they have responded by providing all of these additional amenities that were not illustrated at your study session. I don't believe we really talked about them at the neighborhood meeting either, so this is new to you, based on our discussion. So the big deal here is why are we here? Again, it's density, nothing else is being deviated from, they've since actually polished up the site plan, they don't need setback deviations on any, on any points, they don't need a parking deviation, it's all about the density, it's, they want to go from 14.5 to 28, and they've somehow managed to fit the buildings and the parking on the site plan with that. I, their case is that it may seem counterintuitive, but they believe that concentrating density in certain places in the town makes sense, taking advantage of utilities and services. They contend that the general plan as well supports this, because it's in a community core, it's in the most intense community core we have, it just so happens to have low-density residences adjacent to it, so you have to have this kind of, like a balancing act between how do we support multi-family housing, which we don't have enough of, when we know that. I know a lot of people don't like multi-family housing for a number of reasons, and we won't get into the socioeconomic issues or social justice issues tonight, this is a land use thing, and I would hesitate that we discuss anything like that. It needs, any discussion tonight needs to be based in land use, not any of the other stuff, we don't want to talk about crime, because there's no, it's not a land use issue, if it's not the UDO, then we shouldn't talk about it. And I mean, the public, of course, is welcome to speak, free speech and everything, I would just suggest that we be careful how we discuss it, because it could be considered not legal, so. The applicant does believe that the density, is that by nature a negative? Density can be fine if it works in the right spot. Staff has had a lot of concerns with this project. It's taken us a long time to get to where we're at, and I would say, you've seen my recommendation, I'll get to that in the report, but it's tepid, and it's heavily conditioned on a number of improvements that need to be made to the property, including off-site improvements, and not so much the property itself, but related to the off-site improvements and the addition of landscaping for better buffering. And lastly, you know, the belief is that if this project does work, it's going to give us more rental housing, we have extremely low occupancy rates, and what little, multi-family housing we have is, we've had complaints that there's places for people to live, or to rent a unit, at least a unit that they would want to live in. And so that's the case that the applicant has been making through the process. This is going to be, look like a lot of data to a lot of you, trying to read it and understand it, I'm a planner, I'm kind of a nerd with these things, so I can read it pretty well. But more or less, this is just telling you the details of the project, technical details about setbacks and heights, and just simply reconfirming with you in these tables that it meets code standards for everything but the requested density. We've got the proposed building setbacks listed here, again, they're all about 90, 100 feet from the property lines, where 10 and 20 are allowed. You know, again, you can see to the south, I think the biggest issue so far have been the residents, particularly to the south, are the most concerned, and rightly so, they have very lovely homes that are on, you know, at least acre or larger properties that back or side to this property, they're concerned, they spoke well at the neighborhood meeting about their concerns. I'm hoping that the applicant has, has met and talked to them as, as necessary to work through their issues. I'll let the applicant speak for herself tonight on her progress with the neighbors since the neighborhood meeting. Staff, on the other hand, like I said, kind of went to bat to make sure we got a wall and two rows of trees, which is fairly standard for this type of development. In my experience working with multi-family projects, when you're adjacent to low-density residential, we would want to see that. I mean, the traffic is not going to really impact them to the south, it's going to impact people on 2 North, directly north of them. It's really going to be the appearance of the building mass related to that density, to achieve that density, the buildings look as they do, they look like pretty good-sized buildings, because they are. It's really about building mass, and then the associated, perhaps additional commotion that can be occurred, occurred, occurring through like car doors opening and closing in the parking area, children at play, although there's no play areas right there. So you get more concerned about the aesthetics of the building mass, and as well as, you know, activity and noise. So those are the two things that I would, in my opinion, would be, I would suggest are going to be the most key points in evaluating the land use, since the project takes, you know, access to the north. So as I said, it's been, we've gotten to where we are today. I don't have confirmation from the applicant that they will go along with the conditions that are in here, we've been working to get to a yes. You know, we're not discussing, we don't usually discuss financial impacts at the P and Z level, that's really a council level discussion, and we are asking that the project enter into a development agreement to assure us that we get the off-site improvements that we believe are necessary to mitigate the density that's proposed. That includes paving, sidewalk, curbs and gutters to get out to 2 North, and an improved pathway to connect to the sidewalk that ends somewhere behind the Walgreens. If you've driven the site, you'll know where that's at. We don't want 192 units worth of residents traipsing around in the dirt to get to Walgreens or Safeway, which is their commercial core. Sidewalks are required. The applicant didn't initially want to do any of those improvements, and we said, if you have any hope of getting staff support on this project, you'll need to do all of these improvements, because we won't support the project otherwise. If they were to say that they're not going to do them, or they don't agree to them, then you could take that as a flat recommendation of denial from staff. But as conditioned, I think we can get there. I am still concerned about the density and the appearance of the buildings, but this is where we're at today. I will add that the applicant has asked for financial reimbursement for all of their off-site improvements, and that's another flat no recommendation from staff. Development pays for itself, that's been the mantra, and that's common practice throughout the state of Arizona and the entire country, so. We can go through one by one if you'd like on the conditions, but more or less it relates to paving, how they'll pave through that commercial subdivision, how they'll connect to two north, put in a left turn lane, improve a pathway that's improved that can be walkable to connect to the sidewalk that runs across the Hawksnest boundary. The Hawksnest developer is already bound by P E D condition of approval to improve that sidewalk. So staff found a conflict in trying to require two separate property owners and developers to do the same improvement. So, in lieu of a sidewalk, we're at a minimum requiring a decomposed granite stabilized pathway so that they have a nice place to walk and they're not trying to right, like, you know, walk on the edge of the pavement with cars passing on an arterial, which would not be considered safe. That's where we are today. I'm happy to answer questions on the presentation or flip back and forth between the slides for the public that's here when you speak. You can use the arrows to toggle back and forth between the slides to go to exhibits or I can come up and help you. Just let me know.
So, I'm sure that the council has, or commission has lots of questions for you.
Yes.
And I will take the first commissioner that wants to speak.
I got a question. Good evening.
Pull your microphone up.
Sorry. Earlier, you made reference, I heard you say reference that the applicant believes that this meets all the provisions within the general plan. Is that what I heard you, it's okay.
And I think that's a great question Commissioner McCafferty, yes they do.
Okay, so, I, I've been reading the general plan quite lengthy and there's four targeted strategies when they're talking about development and the land use within the general plan. And one of the targeted strategies deals with the U D O being revised or some type of decision to be made on what we're gonna allow for properties that are on the edge of the core area. Before you or since you, has there been any documentation, any guidelines, any strategic thought about what we're gonna approve on the outer edges, especially those that are adjacent to low-density housing like the properties here?
Chair and Commissioner McCafferty, that is a good question. We're talking about how do we transition out of the cores into places that are outside the core. When you go outside the core, you're in single-family relatively low-density residential almost immediately. It's the nature of our town that we even have a lot of single-family home properties that are in commercially designated property where people are living on five acres and they're zoned almost for commercial, or they're designated for commercial. In this case, the applicants made the argument that based on the setbacks being approximately a hundred feet with additional landscaping and then the wall, that they've taken steps to buffer those single-family residences, which happen to a but a community core where intense development is expected. So we will through the U D O rewrite that I'm actively working on now, be looking at, we're looking at all of the districts for revisions, and in fact, I think that we'll probably create another multifamily district because we only have one. And that is intended to cover a very wide range of projects and it doesn't work well. That's why we have so many planned area development requests is because our U D O only has one district to cover anything that's possibly attached residential. This could be a duplex.
Well, here, because when I read, when I read the general plan, it says, update the U D O to specify the types of uses permitted at the edge of community cores that are appropriate and compatible with adjacent residents. So, in my mind, when I read that, they're looking for a transition.
That's right.
Okay, they're looking for a transition. In this project as it's presented, the transition is the highest density Chino's ever seen to very low density. So how is that consistent with the general plan?
I understand. I think, if I may, we, I do appreciate that the public is appreciative. We have to be careful, we're on public record, so I would think, we'll try to keep it, maybe till the end. So, to address that, that's correct. U D O was adopted in two thousand and six. It's currently be rewritten and it has not been amended to accommodate the general plan issue related to transitioning land uses. So no, it has not yet been updated, but it will be through the rewrite.
Who's next? Go ahead.
The applicant is assisted living facility, and I read through here that they asked if it was for age restrictive and they said no. And if it was going to be income restrictive, they said no. Is this just general public housing or is it supposed to be assisted living?
Chair and Commissioner Matters, that is correct. It's market rate housing, it's not income assisted housing, and it's not age restricted.
Jason, are they gonna apply for low-income housing tax credits?
Chair, Mayor and Commissioner Bacon, I am not aware that they will be. And also, I think it's a good question, but it's not a land use decision, but for the record, I'm not aware that they're applying for any of those tax credits.
Vice Chair Passiak.
Have comments been, have comments been received from the fire department as to, can they support three stories?
Vice Chair Passiak, actually, the buildings are all sprinkled, so there's, their point of access is shown as allowed.
And the police have made comment?
The police, I actually was just met with the chief today, he's aware of the project, but hasn't made any formal comments or concerns on the, on it based as, as it's designed. Any comments he would have would have to be related to SEPTED, like safety by design. It wouldn't be related to anything such as crime, which is often the first thing that people bring up.
I, I know, but with a population increase, there might be an increase of staffing for the police.
That's correct. And Vice Chair Passiak, just as a reminder, for rental units, we do receive a three percent tax on the rental rates, which is intended to cover impacts, operational impacts for the town services. We don't consider projects like this to be like any really significant revenue generators. It's really the, the tax barely, it just covers the increase in services that they demand.
Okay, and just, just as a comment, the multifamily development across the street is, where the standard is fourteen point five, it's fifteen, sixteen units per acre?
That's true, that's correct. It's a planned area development, I think it tips over what's allowed by the base M R one.
I, I realize that, but I'm saying that they, they received an increase and they went up to like fifteen or sixteen.
That's correct.
And then the one in back of the Safeway, they also went over the density limit, but again, that was maybe a sixteen.
That is correct.
Okay, and this, this one is asking for a ninety-three percent increase?
Correct.
Okay, just.
Yes ma'am.
I'm done.
The fire department is clear with having this amount of people, vehicles, access for, the fire department, it has cleared that they,
The fire department has, has cleared that they have enough traffic control if, between Walgreens and the Hawksnest, all of the extra traffic coming in for approximately four hundred cars for this property with only one egress. If there's a school bus and traffic coming in and out for going down to the height, the schools on one west that they're going to have, if there's a fender bender in the morning, that they're gonna have adequate traffic control in that area.
Chair and Commissioner, the, we've had a traffic impact analysis done for the, this, for this project in the wider area. The requested improvements to two north and to the commercial subdivision street have all been outlined and vetted by our town engineer who's behind me, Public Works Director, excuse me, he can speak more clearly if you'd like on that.
I'd like to hear more on that.
Sure. Frank Marbury, Public Works Director and Town Engineer, for those that don't know me. Quick comment on the fire department and the three stories, I specifically asked that question. And the fire department's okay with three stories. They said they can, they can reach that high if they need to, in addition to the sprinklers. As far as the traffic goes, I'm a little confused. Are you concerned? Fire department, traffic control, I'm not sure.
My, this is approximately west of the confusion of trying to get in and out of the post office and pet club and the Safeway gas station. I mean, you can sit there for a long time trying to make a left-hand turn and get out. Now, on the west side, we're gonna have people coming in and out, going to take their kids down to the school. There are approximately four hundred cars if everybody, you know, husband and wife have a vehicle or leaving for work, taking their kids to school in the morning. You've got kids running across the street to go to the side, posed sidewalk to walk down to the school. I don't know if the school bus is eventually going to have a pull-in, that they're gonna come into this and pick up kids that go out to the high school. I just see a nightmare if somebody drops a bicycle in the middle of the street, somebody gets hit, a car gets fender-bendered, and the entire intersection is coming to a screeching halt. How do people get in and out if you only have one egress?
Okay, okay. I, I thought you were talking about, the fire department doesn't usually do traffic control, that's where I was confused. But you're talking just in general with the congestion created there.
That, just, just with this one having approximately four hundred vehicles in that parking lot, if you get the Hawksnest across the street, it's going to be in the same little, everybody's turning left and right and you've got one fender bender and you've got that whole intersection locked down. And how are people gonna get in and out? How's fire? How is police gonna get in and out?
I, I understand now. The, there, we've done two separate traffic analysis, actually three for this area. The, the applicant, as part of their due diligence, provided a traffic impact analysis for that specific development. The town has also gone on and hired an engineer to do a traffic impact analysis considering all of the development going in, the Hawksnest, the apartments over by the car wash, as it was planned a little while ago at least. And we looked at the ultimate sections and, and issues we need, how that affects Highway eighty-nine, how that affects one east, how that affects one west. And I'm actually gonna present that to council on their study session on the nineteenth. Quick summary for the overall ultimate section, when you get everything building out, I don't know if it's beyond what's agendized here, but basically the traffic engineer is recommending a three-lane section, which is a through lane in each direction with a center turn lane to accommodate the turning movements in the different areas. And also some adjustments at Highway eighty-nine and the traffic signal when traffic develops to the point it's a right turn lane to get from the west side of eighty-nine going southbound when the traffic triggers at. The east side, I don't know if we should address that in this, but for this particular development, let me stick to this one.
You can, you can have this, Bree's build line away.
Okay. Okay, the, the, the parking lot at Safeway is actually what's failing now as far as level of service and engineering term. And there's no real good solution for that because of the location of the businesses there. But with a three-lane section going all the way to one east, it might help alleviate that. The impacts for this particular development, what we're recommending per the traffic analysis, is a left turn lane coming off of Highway eighty-nine to get into those apartments. That can either be part of the ultimate section of having the, the center turn lane. Some people refer to it as a suicide lane, but I don't like that term. It's a center turn lane. It's actually safer than what the old suicide lanes were. But in the interim, they could do a dedicated left turn bay for just that development until the town ultimately develops a newer roadway section, and that's what's being proposed here. As far as going towards the school, the, the traffic level didn't warrant a right turn deceleration lane to get into the apartments coming from the school. There wasn't that level of traffic to warrant that, that. So basically, the folks turning in there, it's easier to make a right turn off of the road so that it won't back traffic up as much. There is a need to look at and address crosswalk issues depending on where the sidewalks are located. If there's no sidewalk right now, can't have a crosswalk and, and that's, that's a scary picture is the kids are gonna walk down the street with no sidewalks, but you have to look at where you draw the line between this particular development and the town's overall improvement program. And that's maybe where planning comes into it a little bit to help differentiate what one particular developer is responsible for versus the town as a whole. And that's a little bit of where some of the gray area here is, is being argued back and forth or discussed back and forth. So, but, in a nutshell, per the trafficked, raw traffic numbers, a left turn lane going into the apartments is for the cars and some way to accommodate pedestrians is my recommendation to at least get them to that sidewalk that extends a little bit beyond Walgreens.
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Can I ask the applicant, the property due east?
May have to wait. Jay, she has a question, I think you may be able to answer.
I'll do my best. Unfortunately, the applicant, Ruth Mayday, on behalf of her client, the developer, was outside before the meeting. We had a brief discussion. They were not happy about the item having a second meeting next week, and she never came in the room. So the applicant is not here.
Go ahead and ask your question of.
Yeah, on file.
And unfortunately, they're not here and they're not able to hear and absorb all of the commentary either, so my concern is that they won't be prepared for the thirteenth.
They can watch the videotape.
That's true.
My, my, my other.
She has a, she has actually a very pertinent question, I think.
The property due east, the Cattlemen's Trust here, fund, they have on their south border a twenty-seven-foot parcel that comes within three hundred foot of this property. I'm assuming that it is dedicated for making a roadway, some for future development. The land immediately south of that is for sale. It's behind the church there. One more, the very first picture, there.
There you go.
Oh, I see, yeah, you can see the strip there.
Yeah, parcel three oh six, two, three, zero, two, one, Y. Is a twenty-seven foot, comes in from eighty-nine to within three hundred foot of the property. The property due south of that is currently for sale. I wanted to know if the applicant has entertained purchasing that to bring another easement in, another access in to the southeast corner of that property.
Thank you Commissioner. There's a C V I D easement along, the irrigation easement along the south border of the property extending, I believe, to the east. You can see the trees are growing next to it because there's water there. I am not aware that the applicant has spoken to any adjacent owners about purchasing all her portions of the property. And I'd have to have them speak for themselves, but they're not here.
Okay, that would be my, my number one issue with this property with the density is with traffic because I have sat for twenty minutes at the post office trying to make a left-hand turn out, and you never know which way cars are coming. And I foresee the same thing with this property with Walgreens, people going left-hand turn to take kids to school in the morning and having accidents out there, and then the whole subdivision is, or project is going to be bottlenecked because nobody's gonna be able to get in or out. And I would like to see another easement.
And Chair and Commissioner Matters, you're well within your purview with this being a planned area development and that the flexibility, flexibility that's inherent in a planned area development to suggest that the applicant design, perhaps even an emergency exit route, that's at least built and pre-planned for the event that they can connect one day and maybe even secure a cross-access easement with either one of those property owners that's adjacent. You could, you know, at least encourage them to have that discussion. I don't know that we can force them to purchase a cross-access easement. I think that might be a stretch, but they could at least plan for emergency exit in the southeast corner. It's only landscaping there anyhow, and the parking area is connected right there.
Yeah.
It's possible that they could, and then, you know, we would simply need to work with future development of those parcels to continue it. Perhaps there's a parking area there or a street that we can connect to.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's a twenty-seven-foot strip that came all the way through. I mean, the only thing obvious is it's going to be for a road. If it would just continue to the southeast corner of this property, so there'd be emergency egress for.
And it's on private property, again, I'd, it's, I'd have to, I'd really have to have the applicant reach out to the owner. I mean, as soon as I reach out to her, I'll let her know that the commission would like you, them to engage the adjacent owners and get an answer to you.
We can bring that up later as a recommendation, maybe.
Certainly, you can include an additional recommendation. Should you support the project? If you are not gonna, if, if you make a motion, let's say next week to, to deny the project, then you wouldn't need it. But if you have one in the event of a recommendation for approval, you can add whatever conditions you want.
Thank you.
I have another question regarding the secondary access, which my fellow commissioner brought out. What is the fire department requirement in terms of units before they can require emergency access?
At the, off the top of my head, I'm not certain of the actual number of units. I just know that Andy Smith has advised me that because the buildings are sprinkled and they have, what they have now is sufficient. I don't know if there's a threshold above it where it's, it switches to not being sufficient.
Okay.
I've got a couple of interest, Jason. It appears in reading this that the improvements to Road Two North are somewhat conditional upon Hawksnest. Hawksnest is gone away, we have no idea if they're coming back or not. How can we ask these people to go along with what Hawksnest does when we don't think Hawksnest, as far as we know right now, Hawksnest is not gonna do anything?
Chair and Commissioner Armstrong, the Hawksnest development, we're not contingent, the only thing that's really contingent is eventually they'll need to do curb gutter and sidewalk. But the left turn lane, there's enough right-of-way here that they can still do a left, widen this thing out so the travel lanes ball out around a left turn lane into this project. And we would need to design the paving section, which has not been designed or approved yet, to accommodate that on both sides, you know, on, within Road Two North right-of-way. So they can get the left turn lane in to provide access into the project, but the sidewalk curb and gutter would be, would in Hawksnest develops in the future, which they're already obligated to do once development ensues. But you're correct, we haven't had any other talks. Again, we have had two increases, serious increases in the last six months on both the multifamily portion of Hawksnest as well as the single-family portion, but it hasn't come to fruition yet.
Okay, also, has anybody considered that probably the entrance to this property with only one road is also gonna appear within the school district boundaries? So you're gonna lower the speed limit to fifteen while children are present in school? You're gonna take that traffic and say, forget it, you can't go this way?
That's a good question Commissioner Armstrong. I would have to defer to both the town engineer as, as well as the, the police department and because they set the speed limits based on a variety of public safety concerns.
Okay, Frank sneaking up behind.
I hear, I could hear him shuffling.
I, I would, I will double-check on that for you, but I think it falls outside of any school zones we have there. The school zone, I don't know that it extends that far along two north. That's, is that half a mile, someone?
It was discussed when we were talking Hawksnest, so I'm guessing with this being that much closer, it's, it's gotta be pretty close, but I'd appreciate it if you look into it.
Yeah, we will, we will look into it and work with P D on that to, to establish the school zones properly and make sure that's. and make sure that's the case.
Okay. Al- also, not a question, but the, the density for this, Jason, is getting some water. I'm sure he's getting parched here. The density is almost unbelievable. An extra ninety-two units, one way in, one way out. Parking entrances to the building are all on the inside, so they've gotta go in the north or south entrance, nothing in the middle. I mean, I, I believe something needs to be addressed on the density for sure.
Chair, there's a number, Chair and Commissioner, there's a number of ways you can approach the density. You can approach the density for density's sake, or you can approach the impacts of the density and mitigate those. So, when we're talking about number of units, what it generally results in is larger mass buildings because you're concentrating the footprint of those buildings to accommodate those units rather than having smaller buildings kind of scattered around. Um, if there's a concern with building height, it's well within your purview all to restrict the number of stories. Um, they're asking for a planned area development, so they don't, I mean, you can change it. You could say, for example, if you're most concerned about the homes that are south of the, the property, um, you could seek to partially mitigate building height and restrict buildings, that building to two stories or partial two stories with some three-story, or you could ask for a larger setback. Um, if the, if the density is most specifically to traffic, you know, I have to defer to the traffic impact analysis and what's safety, what's safe and not safe. And if we, we are requesting improvements to, off-site improvements that will mitigate and provide for safe travel within the project. But again, it's a PAD. You can ask for additional mitigation tactics.
Right, and I understand that on the, meeting on the thirteenth is when we should address amenities. I mean...
Oh, we can talk about amenities tonight.
Okay, because exercise stations? What, what does a five or six-year-old do at an exercise station? And if you want me to go walk my dog in the detention basin, what do you do during monsoon season? Teach him to swim?
And, and all honesty, Chair and Commissioner Armstrong, two people will take their dogs. If they want to take them for a longer walk, we'll go walk them somewhere. Usually when people let their dogs out to go to the bathroom, by the time they get out the doors, when the dog is gonna wanna go to the bathroom, um, you know, they're gonna find the first patch of grass that they get to. So, there is some, there is grain space between buildings three and four. Um, I'm not saying that the project has a whole lot of extra open space. I'm just saying that they have open space and they did respond with their list of new amenities they're proposing, which are both indoor and outdoor. And, you know, if you believe that, um, play equipment, um, like a totlot style play equipment facility is needed for the development, it's well within your purview to add that as a requirement. I think that they've decided that they don't want to include it because those little play stations are pretty expensive and they're worried about liability. But nearly every other apartment complex or neighborhood has put something in for the kids.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pathak?
On that last slide, oh, well, you...
Which one? I'm sorry.
This one.
Okay.
I noticed that the drainage tract goes into the property that is not developed more. Will the drainage, will, will the retention basins and drainage be fully developed with this project?
I, uh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Pathak, the, uh, actually, there is a requirement that they coordinate the off-site drainage flows. Property is drained, I believe, draining and sheet flowing to the northeast. So, the commercial property, uh, is owned by Travis Bard, a well-known realtor, I believe developer as well in the whole Prescott region. He has already been in discussion with them and he's aware of it, that I'm aware of. I, I was hoping that the applicant could give us an update on discussions with that property since they almost need to work in some amount of tandem. But in your report, the conditions for drainage being taken care of is required.
So, so it won't be that they stop at their property and then we have a problem with, when, when we do have drainage?
That is correct. There will be off-site drainage improvements required on that adjacent private property. Yeah, Frank can comment if you don't mind, because he's got the drainage report.
One other thing I'd like to note is, as far as the drainage goes, there's an access road they'll be completing through that, other than commercial subdivision. So, the, as far as the off-site drainage, they release the historic rate for their property, so it won't have any larger impact than there is now. The one trick is when you build a new road there, you have to accommodate any water that might cross that road or anything. So, they need to build the road and associated storm drain structures of that road to accommodate our town code, which is no more than one foot of water topping the road so that you can still get ambulances and fire trucks in there.
That's for the hundred-year.
Right. And all we ask is that road be built according to town standards, which that is.
So, the hundred-year event is one foot over the wall?
Yeah, that's my understanding of the code.
That's my understanding too.
So, so that was one of my recommendations was that if they build the road, they take that into account, not only for the property, but for the road between the property and Two North.
Well, they, they have to provide that road
Right.
to get the project.
So, there may be some other drainage to consider from that other property as it relates to that road.
So, the developer and the representative isn't here because they don't like, we're not voting on it today. And the developer wants to be reimbursed for off-site improvements. And from what I'm hearing, just about everybody on this commission is concerned about the density of the project, and there's been no discussion as to perhaps lowering the density level.
Another planning question.
Um, Chair and Vice Chair Pathak, that's correct. We have discussed the issue with density. I've really approached it less from a density perspective as I have to building mass and concerns about the building mass, because that's really what's scaring everybody. That and the additional traffic that would be created. They're already allowed to build a three-story building. Um, it's just that they likely wouldn't be this big if they didn't have to squish this many more units in. Um, in regards to off-site, lowering the density, they've said that to make their numbers work, to make the project work, um, that they need the density that's proposed. They're not here to address whether they can do any mitigation efforts to lower density and, and make smaller building masses. I, I just don't know to say it's, it's, I'm almost unheard of that an applicant doesn't show up for their hearing. I don't know what to say.
I know what to say.
Rather, I should say, they're meeting, it's not a hearing, no.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sanks, just, you've had discussions about would they be willing to make them two-story buildings or whatever? That, that discussion's had between you and them. And what was your feel from, since they're not here, what was your feel from them?
Uh, speculating on any final decision, um, I discussed why wouldn't you make the building along the south property line two stories? Um, then it could step and you could have maybe support a three-story building in the center of the project where it's buffered by itself. And they, they, obviously, that would reduce the number of units by forty-eight, get them down to what, in the one-forties? Still a twenty-five, uh, still a fifty percent increase in density, but it would mitigate the building mass along that property line for those homes that are gonna be most directly impacted. And they said they couldn't do it, so. I don't know if that's changed in the last two months, so.
I have a question for our Public Works Director. Uh, has there been any forward movement or progress after we've discussed Hawksnest maybe sixteen months ago regarding sidewalk between the school and Hawksnest?
From the town's perspective?
Yes.
Uh, no, other than, again, we've got, we're scheduled for a, a work session on June nineteenth to discuss that very issue amongst the other roadway issues, but, uh, and along that line, part of the discussion will be what would be some ways to, to make that happen? How do you, how do you pay for that, so to speak?
Mm-hmm.
In the future? It dates back to the two thousand seven Small Area Transportation Study we have that recommends a, some sort of pathway along Two North from the Peavine Trail all the way to the school. So, um, the, the concept is there. It's just, how do you, how do you pay for that as a town? And that's luckily not my job. That's for the council to decide.
Well, that's where I little, have a little heartburn with the planning profession. We're proposing these higher-density commercial cores and as planners, it looks really nice. It fulfills the planning for city planning and beautiful cities. And yet, uh, comments from other agencies like Public Works is like, "Well, we'll address that subject later." But first, when we first have the child killed, the town will find the money real fast.
That's...
And that's historically, and that's the reason why I'm against this project, is that if that child was mine, the city would be contributory negligent and not providing proper planning. Now, there are issues, but I see that as a big issue, is that we have a concern for our kids, but does the town council share that same concern? I don't know. And that sidewalk has to be in there.
I don't know if I should speak for counsel.
Yeah, and that's just an opinion. That, you don't, you don't have to reply to that. Not just an opinion.
I do know in their last meeting concerning another development, they were adamant that sidewalks shall be included. I can tell you that. That was a condition of the rezone of the last, uh, rezoning that they had heard, so. Um, I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, thank you.
Frank, if you'll stay there a minute, that June nineteenth work session, is that an open to the public meeting? And if so, what time and where?
It's, yes, it's open to the public, six P.M. on a Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions for staff?
I, I have one question they may have to look into. This report says that the total square footage for this, these buildings is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred square feet, and they're one and two-bedroom apartments. So, we're looking in the range of seven fifty to nine fifty square feet for these units. And looking at this planned area development, you see a very small game room, game room in building three, a small, um, exercise room in unit four. And I'm wondering, as a ratio, as to what the amenities are versus this hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet for rentals that whoever develops this is going to get the money from and make the profit. And they should because they've invested money in it. Um, and I'm sure the laundry rooms on the first and second floor are gonna be coin-operated. But, and maybe it's too big of a question, but are these units gonna have hookups for washers and dryers? Or is it that everyone's gonna use these coin-operated laundromats? But that's an operational item.
Chair and Vice Chair, to address that, I'm not certain if they'll have hookups or not. The applicant, again, is not here to answer that question. Um, in regards to ratios, I think that's a very good question, and that's going to be raised in the UDO rewrite. Uh, most towns and cities that I've worked in have specified performance measures for multifamily projects and a somewhat of a sliding scale of if you want more density, we want to see more of this, X, Y, and Z. They have a pecking order of items that should be included. They could be in a scoring system to see if the project makes merit, if you will. Um, our, our zoning district really doesn't have that in there. It's pretty basic. So, um, what we're doing here is, you know, I think it's gonna be a gut check on, on behalf of staff and as well as everyone in the commission and council to decide if they think that it's an appropriate amount of amenities or if they need to step it up or, or not. I, I, um, upon further reflection on this, I am a bit more concerned thinking about the children's play area that there really isn't anything targeted to the children besides the indoor playrooms playing video games, so.
Um, Jason, um, is there a possibility that you could maybe provide the commission with some percentages of square footage of money-making space as to pose the square footages of things that make it enjoyable to live there?
Certainly, uh, Chair, what I can do is, we can do that, and if you will, I can actually, it's only gonna be relevant if we can releva- make it relevant against maybe other projects. Um, I can see what we've got for other multifamily, and I can also call Prescott Valley and Prescott for some of the more recent, recently approved multifamily projects and try to look, see what I can do in a, in a week's time to pull that together. But I can certainly make ratios for you for next week.
That would be helpful, I think, for us to determine what other things might need to be added.
Yeah, a lot of times these projects, large, pretty nice apartment projects at this size usually would have a clubhouse that has the leasing office in it. In this case, I believe, um, the leasing office would be based on some manager living in one of the units. I'm not certain that they have a specific office. I don't know if I've noted it. I don't see it itemized in the, any of the, the site plan, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other commissioners want to ask staff questions?
Thirteenth meeting, Jason, I, I, I don't know if it's a provision that needs to be addressed or not, but I'd really like to see the town attorney up on that screen for that meeting.
Chair and Commissioner Armstrong, we can, we can ask Susan Goodwin or Andrew McGuire. Uh, Andrew McGuire is out until the twelfth, uh, on vacation. Susan is a partner in the firm. You, you may know her already. She's an excellent attorney as well. She's actually been assisting me with this in the draft development agreement. I'll ask if she can attend via Skype at least.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Will do.
Anybody else? We can always return to this after the public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to open up the public portion of this meeting. This will require everybody to be on their best behavior. You will be given a minimum of three minutes to speak. I won't shut anybody off unless I feel that the, it's not going to be productive for this meeting. If you want to speak, you'll raise your hand. And then I will acknowledge you. You will step up to the podium. You will state your name. You will be polite and concise, and please try to be the least amount of repetitive as we can be. Uh, don't, not required anymore. Used to be name and address, but it's, I, if I'm not mistaken, we're not required to give our address. Okay, so, opening the public portion of the meeting. Ma'am, step up and please tell us who you are.
My name is Carolyn Strickroth. I live on Grove, and I'd like to apologize for jumping up here so quick. Uh, first off...
I gotta keep the wolves at bay, ma'am.
First off, personally, I'm opposed to the entire project. I don't think it fits into the, what's going on in, in our area. But my main concern was fencing. And Jason said they were agreed to a six-foot fence, but he didn't say where.
Um, he, he did actually say that, but if, Jason, if you'd like to clarify, that might be helpful.
Um, if you look at the, uh, site plan on this side, where the, kind of the equestrian property of this facility, this is gonna be six-foot vinyl-coated chain link, uh, color would be determined. On the south property line would be a six-foot block wall. On the east side, there's not a requirement for a fence. The UDO doesn't require it.
I, I, I missed the west side. Chino is a truck town. Now, not to say all these people are going to be driving trucks, but there's gonna be a lot of them in there. And I believe that the block wall should also go down the west side because looking at the drawing, there are cars that are going to be parking, uh, facing into the west, and that's facing right into that person's property. And I think they should be allowed to have just as much privacy as the people on the south. So, I feel the block wall should also go down the west side. And my second concern is traffic. A lot of us that live in that particular area and go out to go to eighty-nine, you cannot turn left on eighty-nine and go north off of One North unless you take your life in your hands. So, a great many of us are going down to One West, going over to Two North and going to the post office or Safeway. So, we are already impacting a lot of traffic, just the residents that are already living there. And I just think that adding the additional third story and that many more cars, trucks, vehicles in general is way too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, ma'am?
Mr. Commissioner, can I address one of your statements? Because it's in the plan already that along with the six-foot fence, there will be a three-foot block wall along the west.
Can I address that? I understand that, but a three-foot wall, just the people that live on Grove, we have nineteen vehicles whose headlights are much, much higher than thirty, thirty-six inches. So, all those, that thirty, that thirty-six-inch wall on the west side is not going to stop the majority of the vehicle headlights.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being handicap accessible. I really appreciate it. I, my name is Tina Harmon, H-A-R-M-O-N. I also live on Grove. And I'm concerned about the density, and I thought some of the points that the commissioners came up with were right on target about the, the impact to that dense of a, a, a community onto our area. If you look at the edge of our cul-de-sac, the edge of our cul-de-sac is less than thirty feet from the property line. And they wanna put a, 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 a small wall. I would propose it to be a six-to-eight-foot wall so we can have some privacy. It's gonna be a hundred and ninety-two units. Might, might be four hundred people, but it might, might be an additional two hundred dogs or cats that are, that could go into this area. People that live in apartments tend to be, you know, less responsible, and we're concerned about that bleeding into our properties. And most people on our street are very responsible with their animals. And we're concerned about, about that. I think the committee, there's been things that have been... I think the committee, there's been things that have been said that the impact to our property values is not relative, is not relevant. I think it is relevant because one person shouldn't benefit from, from something and everybody else in the surrounding community when there, there is one to three acre properties or, or more. So, um, I'm, I'm also, the, the reason with the wall, I think we need to have that buffer from the lights at night when the, the trucks come in and out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Moyer. I live on Bumblebee, my property joins, uh, the windmill.
Sir?
Neighbor's not available to be here tonight.
Excuse me, would you pick the microphone up a little bit higher? There you go.
Yeah, my neighbor's not available tonight, but anyhow, him and I both are adjacent to the windmill. And we were here a few weeks ago requesting a block wall, which, uh, the commission did recommend, okay? To council, and council deleted it from the, the plan. They didn't like it. And, uh, I'm curious to know if anybody on council lives in a situation like that where it's going to be a hundred cars going back and forth next to your property line. And I do appreciate you people recommending it. Then I thought, well, maybe I can put a, a wood wa, uh, build a fence. But there's a fifteen-foot right away that the electric company has on my side of the fence, so that's, I can't do that. The plan that shows on the wall, it doesn't really give a true image of the proximity of the windmill to our properties. So, I'd formally like to invite anybody from council or the commission to come over and personally take a look at it, because it's close. And I really think we need a block wall. So, thank you. Uh, has nothing to do with that.
Um, let me, excuse me. I understand your concern about the block wall, and I think it has some relevance here because of the other properties surrounding it. I think that's your point.
Correct.
So, um, and I appreciate you speaking to us about that. And as far as the, um, ask, asking the council if they've had headlines shine in their face, I would suggest maybe to go to the council meeting and be very straightforward with them.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate you people, you know, recommending it, so, I think it's very important.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Short. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Jean McFadson, and I live on Grove as well. Uh, and I'm a retired English teacher, so pardon me, I did my research and I wrote it out. Uh, many of the points that you brought up this evening are points that I have also, so I apologize for any repetition. I understand that Chino Valley is looking to make some, some revenue. Uh, this development will do that for Chino Valley. Unfortunately, the biggest problem is density, as you have pointed out. We are, there's nobody in this room that's going to object to the ninety-nine because it's already, the ninety-nine units because it's already there, and, and we can't change that. We can and will try very hard to change the one ninety-two. Research suggests that mixing housing, uh, is good for the, the community. In almost every research that I looked at, they were talking about urban renewal. They were not talking about rural living as we have here. In recommending this project, Jason stated the following, and I quote, "Surrounding property owners were concerned that their home values would be affected by a multifamily residential unit. Uh, most of the surrounding properties are agricultural, uh, in use." Again, studies that say property values are not affected by apartment complexes deal with revitalizing urban areas. We are rural. Grove Lane is not urban. Almost all the homes in the immediate area share one trait, they are one acre or more. From the general plan for Chino Valley adopted in two thousand and three, what are, here are my questions. What is the overarching economic plan for the area? You have identified circles of commercial development. Brook is on the outer edge of that, as you pointed out. But what commercial developments are ongoing to employ these people in a hundred and ninety-two apartments? Under roads and circulation, and this has been talked about already, one of the general plan's goals is to provide an alternative, uh, for Highway eighty-nine and two road north. Having a left-turn lane into a hundred and ninety-two apartments is simply not enough. That's a nightmare waiting to happen. In another section of the general plan, it talks about, um, a plan to encourage non-motorized use of transportation. I cannot find any plans to that degree. Under the strategic plan from two thousand and fourteen, that's supposed to cover sixteen through twenty, what are the jobs that these apartments, these apartment dwellers are going to take? What plans are there to attract small and large, um, commercial industry? And when? What about Hawksnest and the Heritage Business Park? Do we house people first and then see what's going to happen? The strategic plan reads, "The town of Chino Valley continues to emerge from the recession. However, limited availability in infrastructure creates a challenging environment in which to grow commercial and industrial development." From the general plan summary, "The town council has recognized that Chino's sense of place is rural, one of open spaces, and they have published statements that endorse this lifestyle. Putting this type of complex in a small space is out of step." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other brave soul like to step up? Ma'am?
Hi, thank you for listening, being here and listening to our opinion, and my name's Cindy Cole. I also live on Grove Lane, these are my neighbors. I purchased my home on Grove Lane the end of January. The reason I purchased this home, I took many weekends driving every street in Chino. I've been up every hill, every paved street, every dirt, dirt street. Grove Lane was awesome. That's why I purchased that home at the end of January. I have a son live with me, my parents live with me. Those neighbors are wonderful, we all have acre lots. It's quiet. I was aware of the ninety-two apartments. Had I been aware of a hundred and ninety-two, I don't know if I would have purchased the home. Ninety-two with these neighbors, with their homes which are gorgeous, that's why I wanted on that street. I looked at the paperwork, and I have all this paperwork still because I just purchased my home in January. When Grove Lane LLC subdivided those lots, there's a lot of guidelines. I have paperwork this thick. You cannot put C-trains out there, you cannot put certain kind of storage sheds out there. If you're going to build another, um, extended building, it has to go by code, it has to be certain size. It has to, it, we're not a HOA, we don't pay HOA dues, but there are guidelines similar to that. That's what makes Grove Lane so attractive. That's why we purchased. It's quiet, you get a hu, you get four hundred cars. We're not going to have that, we're going to lose that. Again, it's a nice street to have a family. You start, if, if you do another easement, another excess besides the one, that's going to even make it worse for us. Because right now, we are a nice, quiet street. It's not going to be that way when you have four hundred cars starting up in the morning going to work. Anyway, I just, like I say, I just moved there because I love it, I wasn't aware of the hundred and ninety-two. And, um, it's an awesome area, and it was subdivided to be wonderful. That's what all the paperwork, when they divided that up, that's how the paperwork was to make it and keep it a nice street. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Chris Foley, I own the horse property to the west. And I too knew when I bought my property that the pasture next to me, um, could have up to ninety-plus units on it. At the time I bought my property, they were planning on, on an assisted living, which I was very excited about. I, I, we, this town needs an assisted living, this town needs a nursing home, it would bring jobs. But that's off the table now. I'm appalled at the request for doubling the density that's already allowed there. The density that's already allowed there, the ninety-two units on six-plus acres, it's logical, we all knew it or should have known it when we bought our property. It's a good transition, as Commissioner McCafferty was talking about, to go from my property, the single acre, uh, properties, into the ninety-two units on the six-plus acres, to the light commercial development, to maybe heavier development up to eighty-nine. I, I would like to ask the city, why would we even think of approving this? Why can't we just let the current zoning stand? And if somebody can't make the numbers work on seven acres of bare land, do the rest of us have to suffer for that? I mean, I have four acres, I'm SR one. Technically, I could put three more homes on my house, I mean, homes on my property, but I can't because there, the access to that would have to go right through my living room. So, tough luck, you know? It's, it is what it is. I strongly request that the commission deny the request to double the density. I am not even happy about being told that we might have to compromise on it. I, I don't see what's wrong with the current density. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We'll give you a repeat performance.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. And I know this was, uh, mentioned in our last discussion we had a couple of months ago. But if you look at the apartments down by, across from Antelope Golf Course, they're the two-story apartments. Look at those apartments, go to Prescott Valley, look at the three-story apartments across from the entertainment center, humongous change. It's unreal. I used to live in Prescott Valley, been at the entertainment center many times. It has run the, the hills for Bradshaw Hills. It's, it's right there, it, like I say, it's a huge change. You might not think two to three is, when you're looking at it. The ones by Antelope Golf Course, they're great, they're two stories. When you see the ones in Prescott Valley, the three stories, it's awful, it's run that whole area. One reason I left.
Are you talking about the ones over there off of Florentine?
Yes, right across from, um, right across from the entertainment center.
The event center.
Yeah, the event center. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Doug McFadson, uh, live on Grove Lane. The, it, it's been brought up, but I just kind of want to, uh, open it up here. The zoning as it is, we can't do anything about. They want to double the density, uh, and because they've figured that they're not going to make it, they can't make it work with the existing zoning financially. I understand, uh, I've been in business. We're all trying to get by, but I think this is just a little too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you next, sir.
My name is Autumn Islewicz, I am a town resident, but I'm not a direct resident of this area. And I just have one comment that I'd like the commission to consider, and that is the fact that the applicant made the choice to not even be here and address the general public and the other town residents tonight. And probably the rudeness in that, um, that she's not even willing to address our concerns.
Thank you. Sir?
My name's Mark Clevenger, and I thank the commission for the opportunity to, uh, voice our concerns and stuff. Also thank all, all my neighbors. Actually, my mom has, um, the, the property that's, one of the ones that's severely affected. Um, she shares a common border with our north and the project south. And I'll tell you, one, the one thing that comes to mind, first of all, I mean, I, I can't disagree with any comments that were made, um, by the neighbors and stuff. But this, um, oh. The flooding, and I'd invite anybody from the city, the engineers or the public works, to come out and witness on any, um, major monsoon event especially. But the end of that cul-de-sac, if this, if our drainage is restricted at all, I'm not sure if it drains through this, uh, um, retention area or not, but it's a little bit scary for us now, if it gets restricted at all, uh, we would be flooded, or at least my mom would be. I do own a property down at the, at the, uh, one, um, my wife and I do, at the one south, I guess it is. Or, um, let me get my, one north, yeah. It's a vacant lot, so I'm kind of speaking for myself, but for my family too, and neighbors, but, um, I, I just, I think, uh, one comment that says I'm appalled by the, the project, I have to bear witness to that. It just doesn't seem to fit. It, I have the same concerns for traffic, for safety, for pedestrians. I wonder about the sewage, how the plant is going to sewer plant, if you start, I mean, the one project, maybe it would, you know, handle it just fine, but when you're talking about the other projects in the area, I don't, I don't know how we're going to, uh, maintain the traffic flow in there. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the sewer plant capabilities, um, everything this mentioned, so. Anyway, I guess with all that said, I am very much, um, disapprove of, of, uh, allowing, what is it, a hundred and ninety-two, uh, units in there, so, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
The one that shows the outline.
Yep, yep, right. This one?
No.
There you go.
And then what I, there's my arrow. Okay. This is my house, right there.
Excuse me, ma'am, your name, please?
This?
Okay, that's my house, right there. Mary Turner. Mary Turner. Um, I lived on Grove Lane for over sixteen years. And, um, despite what people may think, I did not get any notification about the rezoning or about this project. And I believe that I should have, but that's, you know, past. So, my question is, is if this gets okayed, and you want to propose a road here from the highway end, maybe this will become three hundred units, four stories high. Maybe this will become three hundred units, four stories high. So, I'm not only looking about what's happening with this, if that happens, what's going to happen later? And then back to the layout of the apartments, where are the dumpsters? Because that's a lot of trash. Where are the dumpsters? In my corner, right next to my house?
Right next to Orby's.
Yeah, that's the dumpsters? Yeah, that, that, I mean, we have a lot of crows in Chino Valley. And that's a lot of trash. The other thing that the, do the buildings have lights? They're three stories high, would there be flood- They're three stories high. Would there be floodlights, three stories high? Because that looks into my backyard all night long. So those are just, I wish my husband were here, but we only found out about this meeting two days ago because somebody put a handwritten note in my mailbox. And I know he would have a lot to say, so I trust that you will make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason just asked a question. This meeting was posted as per all of the ordinances and regulations for the town of Chino Valley?
Chair, that's correct. We run the notices off of GIS, and all the addresses within a buffer of three hundred feet are noticed. Because of the large lots, some of the lots that are three lots out or further won't get a notice. I am happy to see, though, that the community is discussing this and sharing information with each other. This is our second public meeting on the project. There are going to be three others. I encourage them all to continue to participate and place their opinions.
Mr. Chairman, I think the state statute allows the planning director to go out greater than three hundred feet on projects that have significant impact in the area. Is that correct?
Commissioner Bacon, that's correct. We, we can do a larger radius. And at the time, I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't had an update on the citizen outreach of the applicant. I've requested on two occasions an update on what discussions have been made. The whole street's talking about it. They're the impacted ones. I already knew that they were all in, in touch. I, we, we could probably send out another notice before council hearings. If it's the direction of the, of the chair and the commission, I'd be more than happy to do a renotice and expand the notification up five hundred or a thousand feet.
That would be appropriate.
It seems like the subdivision, most of the folks are, have some opinion about it, so I think they should be included in the notices that you send out for future meetings.
Certainly, it would be a courtesy notice at this point. We wouldn't meet statutory requirements for a meeting on the eighth. I will also say, there's a couple items I'd like to address in regards to how this works logistically. You're not bound by any means to a special meeting on the thirteenth. That was a suggestion made by staff. As again, I've said, the applicant's really been pressing and pushing, and they have a right to almost demand a specific hearing date if they wanted to. It doesn't necessarily mean it would bode well for them. And the hearing dates we're on right now, we're pretty much nearly demanded. So if you wish, you don't have to have this meeting on the, on the thirteenth. You can push this out to your regularly scheduled meeting in July if you believe they need more time. There's been a lot of things discussed tonight. I don't see, considering the applicant's non-involvement in this hearing, I don't even know how to address them addressing it unless they watch the videotape. In many cases, you know, this project's not looking good. I'm just being, being candid, I think it speaks for itself. We haven't had a single resident speak in support of this project. And again, you don't, you're not forced or required to compromise or slide the scale back and forth. You can flatly deny a project based on its lack of merit if you believe that's the projects, you know, where the project should go.
Just to ask the question, how busy is the agenda for July?
Two items so far.
Are they this caliber of items?
No. Chair, no, I don't, I don't think I have any caliber of items like this one on the, on the, in the whole docket right now.
Boy, are we happy.
I would, Chair, I know we've had a number of members of the public speak. I can address some of the talking points that came up if you wish.
I, okay, so I agree with what you're saying there because there was lots of questions, and I'm sure you have some comments on some of those questions. You had something you wanted to say?
Since I brought up a state statute, can you clarify for me? My last understanding, that was several years ago, when this is, approaches town council, if there are more than twenty percent of adjoining property owners in opposition, which this might be the case, that a supermajority of council needs to approve this. And the reason I'm bringing it up, this isn't council, of course, is because the community should be aware of these statutory requirements if they're, if they decide to go to council.
Chair and Commissioner Bacon, I had a very brief discussion with the applicant before this meeting. I was advised that she was now aware that some of the residents may have obtained legal counsel. I anticipate hearing from that legal counsel at some point to discuss their, the provisions for a legal protest. The current UDO is out of date in regards to the legal protest provisions because the state passed a new House bill last year. And it's on our docket for the UDO rewrite that will update it to reflect that. Anyhow, state statute overrides town code, so, you know, they do have it here. They are, based on their request, they could be subject to a supermajority vote. I assume, based on what I've heard here tonight, that at least fifty percent of the adjacent owners are going to probably be interested in legal protest, which would force the supermajority vote. For those of you that, that sounds like legal speak, that means instead of a seven-member council voting, let's say they were to recommend approval for three, it would pass, a supermajority vote would require a three-quarter vote, which would require basically six out of seven votes to get it.
From the town council?
From the council. Yeah, they don't, you won't have to worry about supermajority at the commission, it'd be at the council. It's actually in this House bill. I can share that with you. I actually have a copy, and I can just give it to you. And then I assume you'll be, you're, you're twenty-five percent of by yourself because you have the whole, you have the whole West Side, so. More or less, the project would have to have an overriding vote for approval by council if they file a valid legal protest in time. You'll need to, you'll need to look at it. I have it here for you. That said, whenever you'd like me to answer.
Well, I'd like for you maybe to address a few of the concerns that some of the public have spoken about, and then we can talk after that.
And Chair and Commissioners, I also would like to actually thank the public for being so diplomatic in their comments. A lot of emotion in the room, but they kind of kept it out of their discussion points. They were very poignant. It's appreciated because we can focus on the facts. I understand their concerns with the density. Their, this is a developer-driven request. There was a suggestion, why would we even entertain this? Well, we have to by law. They have a legal right to file a rezoning application, just like any one of them could file applications on their own properties. That doesn't mean it's going to get approved. It just means that they can ask for it, and we go through due process. They paid their fees, and they're following, somewhat following protocol through the process. I've unfortunately not had a chance to really address many of the citizen concerns from the neighborhood meeting. As I suggested, I've been waiting for a formal response on follow-up with the neighbors and their concerns. You know, specifically, these are the concerns, and these are how they've been addressed. Kind of had to extrapolate that from somewhat piecemeal communication, so. I'm hearing a lot of these, more thorough recount of where people stand on this project. Again, there's been no support from the neighborhood to the south or to the west. And there's no one spoken to the north because of toxicity, and there's nothing there. And then it's commercial property to the east, or commercially designated. In regards to where will these people work, we can take that sort of comment into consideration. We, as you know, we've been master-planning a whole manor. We hope to get an industrial park there. We've hired an economic development director who's out there hitting the pavement, trying to get new businesses to come here, get us in the grocery store, of course, doing all of those sorts of things. So we are making efforts on our end to get the jobs, but this is correct. Typically, rooftops oddly enough precede commercial development and even industrial development. Commercial doesn't want to land here until they feel like they have enough rooftops to support their business and make it successful, so it's kind of a yin and yang. That's a really broad brush approach to answering that question, but it's, all of the concerns that were mentioned are very valid. I did, would hesitate any consideration, again, related to perceptions of crime or social justice issues related to Land use decision. Again, free speech, it's on the record, but I would be careful to address that in any recommendation that you make. Clearly, density, they're not entitled to the density they're asking for. So if you were to deny the project, it doesn't mean the property is not developable. They could still build an apartment project on this property. So I, I don't know. I think the public seems very clear and very well-educated on what the points of the project are, and they've stated their concerns clearly. I'm trying to remember, there was some concern about the walls and fences. It is a six-foot wall on the south property line. That's not where the three-foot screen wall is. It'd be a six-foot masonry wall, and it's in the conditions. It's bad in the landscaping, it's in the conditions that you have before you. Trash enclosures are located throughout. They're typically placed on the perimeter because they try to get the dumpsters within even distances of the buildings, which they've done. If there is concerns, which it sounds like there is, the trash enclosure is located to the farthest south, we can suggest that they move them further north away from those property lines so you don't get the six-thirty a.m. clunking of the trash trucks picking up the dumpsters, and just double them up with some located further north. I think it's an excellent idea if this project were to be successful in terms of the rezoning case. We can certainly move those up. It's actually quite common to do that. I'm surprised we didn't move them yet. Trying to think what else was brought up that hasn't been already addressed. Oh, the lights. We wouldn't, we would never support floodlights on the buildings. They need to be fully shielded, downward-directed, and hided at the, at the minimum height necessary to accomplish site security. We can actually add that as a condition. If this were to get a recommendation for approval is where you would add the condition. We could suggest, you know, that lighting be addressed by the development services director to be fully shielded, downward-directed, and hided at the minimum amount. They have the photometrics on there that show the light spill meets the minimum requirements at the property line, but we can certainly address that, particularly along the south property line. And west property line. Oh, right, and Frank wants to address one north intersection, comments that were made.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Just since it was brought up, I do want to say that CYMPO, the planning organization, we have on our plan, the, I think they call it the MTIP, it's an acronym. But we're looking right now at 2023 for a signal at one north and Highway eighty-nine. Well, that, that's, that's the year. I, it has to do with availability of money. They're actually designing it as we speak. We're looking to complete the design sometime next year. We would always look for an opportunity to move that time up, but that's where it is in the current plan with all of the state, local, and federal monies involved. It's a rather expensive signal project because of some of the turn lanes and retaining walls and things that are needed there. ADOT is actually managing the design and construction of that project. And also like to address the drainage. As a general rule, you're, we, we would not impede the drainage on other properties when you look at a drainage plan. In reality, can't say that always hasn't happened, but that's the, when you, as an engineer, design things, you try and follow the law that says you can't impede or put more water on someone else. So we follow those as best engineering practices as we can.
So are, did you two guys have any more comments you wanted to make?
I, I think that was it as far as I needed, unless there were some more clarifications that, that I missed.
Let's just hold off one second. Okay, so is there anybody else in the public that would like to have something else to say? You first, and you second.
I'm Carolyn Strickroth. I live on Grove. And something just came to mind that I hadn't even considered before. Four hundred more people. There are not sufficient doctors in this entire tri-city area to take on four hundred new patients. And as probably most everybody knows, and I speak from personal experience on a number of occasions, the normal wait at YRMC West in the ER, which is where a great many of these people will end up going, is a minimum of three hours. And now you're going to put four hundred more people.
Sir?
Oops. Hi, I gotta get here. Hi, I'm Dan Pierce. I live on Grove Lane. And, and now I remember my address. It's five-twenty-six Grove Lane. And, yeah, I live right across the street from Mary, you know, everything. I went out and met all my neighbors. I moved here in January, February, or April. I lived in Prescott Valley, but when I lived in Prescott Valley, I shopped, and then I looked. I kept my eyes open. And then I waited and everything, and then I saw this area, Grove Lane. I'll get to it quick. I got my three minutes. But like, you know, you know, I go, boy, I have some room, and it's quiet, and it's beautiful. I go, every night I go out, I'll pull a few weeds. I'm not used to the weeds and the rock and everything, but, you know, that's a different area, but. I was a fence man. What's beautiful to me is to drive down the road and look at barbed wire. And barbed wire is beautiful. When you say block wall to me here and everything, I go, I don't want that block in my view. I want to see. But now, I forgot where I was going, but I go out in my front yard, and then I can look straight up, and then I look at the Big Dipper. And then I do remember these simple things. If I put the two little stars together, I can go down to the North Star. And then I go, I keep looking at that map, and then I'm going, where's North? And then I go, then I look down my street. It's the end of my cul-de-sac. And even during the nighttime, during the daytime, I go, that's beautiful. That's a beautiful view I have looking through at the end of my cul-de-sac between the two neighbors. I go, they're doing a good job, you know? And then it came up, after I moved in here, they're going to build an apartment complex. And I go on, why would they do that? I go, I lived in Prescott Valley. I saw like the retail area and how it was building good, bringing in a lot of work for a lot of people. But I go, Chino Valley is just to me, it's beautiful. And I go, why would they put in an apartment complex and like ruin the beauty of like Chino Valley? I go to the senior center. I have my table, and everybody, they're real, talk a lot and friendly. They'll come sit at my table, and I'll tease them, don't block my view. I'm going to look out the window. I go, I can see like that openness, and you could see that cattle there. I go, they are going to move on. They need more room. They need to get away from all these people on these one-acre lots and building in here, you know, they need more room. But then I go, if I turn my head, I go, if you look right over there, I go, what we'll see is like a three, they're talking about being, building a three-story building. And then the more I try to figure it out, I'm, you know, we're getting the numbers, the four hundred cars, and like all this, and then I'm going, man, by the time you park that many cars in there, I go, how many people? You got the two-bedroom, the one-bedroom. I go, if you get the one-bedroom, you're going to get the two cars, you know? I go, you're going to run into a parking problem for one with these people. But then I just worry about kids. Mine are raised, but then like, you know, you talk to sidewalk, yeah, you gotta have that, you know?
Sir?
I went over my three minutes.
Yeah, and you made your point four minutes ago, so.
That's good. I want to make my point and everything. It's been nice talking to you. I'll meet you again. I was trying to read the names to try to remember. I got to write it down, but like, you know, it's, you know, I'm just becoming more familiar with this area, so. This is, I actually looked here. I go, they should move the apartment complex over here and just recustomize this building.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else like to speak? Okay, so I'm going to set a rule here. If you've been up here three times, that's about all the turns I can give you. Then in that case, please step up to the podium and state your father's name.
My father also lives on Grove Lane with me.
And his name is?
He is a ex-waterwell driller. Okay, so his question is?
What is his name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Burl Nixon.
Thank you.
So his question is, what is the difference? Has there been any studies on the water table for ninety-two apartments versus a hundred and ninety-two? What is that doing to our water table? A few years ago, Butterfield, when everybody was using their wells, almost everybody on the street had to re-drill, had to go deeper. So have there been studies on our water table with the differences between the ninety-two units and a hundred and ninety-two?
That gentleman right there is going to tell us all about it.
I don't know if it affects the decision, but as far as water code and, and the laws go, this is not a subdivision, so they're not required to obtain a certificate of assured water supply like a residential subdivision would. The town has got water lines out in front there to provide water from town wells.
Just to be clear, apartment projects, and you guys correct me if I am wrong here, their water supply does not have to be assured like a subdivision does. The, the state water rules do not require apartment complexes to have an assured water supply.
That's my understanding that the, the subdivision rule kicks in at actually six or more lots, so even a minor subdivision, because the county definition of a subdivision is different than the town or municipality. So for us, a subdivision is four or more lots, but for counties, it's six or more, and the state uses a six or more definition. So less than six lots does not require a certificate of assured water supply inside the AMA boundaries, is my understanding. I always state that I can be corrected by a lawyer if need be.
I get that one.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, a couple items, it's an excellent question, the issue of assured water supply or having water for the project or the water table are all very good questions and points. very good questions and points. They would receive their water from city-provided water services and their, basically their own assured water supply to provide services. We would just need to make sure there's capacity in both the sewer and the water lines servicing this project to serve the project, and they wouldn't be able to build without it. But it isn't really a land use decision, although it's an excellent point.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. I'm watching real close because I'm getting hungry.
Beans are on the subject of water. I know the subdivision there behind the windmill, which is fifty-two homes, which I'm sure you people know, Appaloosa is not capable of handling that, and the state is going to make a study on that, and they're saying it could possibly take a year. And this is all hearsay, I don't, I didn't talk to the water company.
Well, this, this, the water supply for this project would be provided by the city of Chino Valley, it would not have anything to do with Appaloosa Meadows.
Well, I know the, the state's going to do a study on it. I don't have the paperwork personally on it, but, yeah. And also, I wanted to mention-
Excuse me, this-
Those homes are actually being-
This is not on the agenda, we can't speak about it.
Yeah, but any of the Appaloosa Meadow, it's windmill things, we can't talk about tonight, I've been a little bit lenient to give everybody a chance to speak.
I thought I could talk about anything.
No, what's on the agenda?
Well, anyhow, there's homes on the market there for, for the windmill.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody else in the public like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Armstrong, and I have a question because it just seems like everything that we're talking about, well, if this guy does this, then we can do this, and if this guy does this, if Hockness doesn't go in, the street is not going to get redone. If Heritage Complex, whatever that business complex is, they're not going to have egress to a land type property. Who decides who can go in first so that the next guy can get his project done? There's no dates or requirements about any of that, but this guy's landlocked. Heritage is going to give him entrance when he develops. Uh, when's he going to develop? I mean, it, it, it all could tumble down. I think it's something that needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Jason, can you address that, please?
Thank you, yes, it is, this is a unique property in the sense that it is technically kind of landlocked. They are taking access through Heritage Place, as you can see on the site plan. Digging into the conditions of approval, which are obviously at the end of the report, they actually will be required to pave the street through Heritage Place to connect the Two North with this project. They won't have to wait for Heritage Place to develop. Further, Mr. Bard, the owner of that property, has not stated any schedule for development, so we're not sure when it will develop, nor Hockness.
Okay, just to clarify, this was brought up in the, the meeting that we had before this, that the road going out to One North is going to be developed even though that subdivision is not developed as part of the project for this hundred and ninety, whatever unit apartment complex. Along with, as the engineer stated earlier, the drainage for the project will have to be pushed into the subdivision that is not developed to the north as part of this project, is that correct?
Chair, that is correct. We spent a lot of time talking about onsite improvements, we've talked about that site plan, we talked about the buildings. We didn't spend that much time going into the offsite improvements, they are listed very specifically as the conditions. This project does, definitely has a unique set of required offsite improvements to make this project even feasible.
Okay, one more time, anybody else would like to speak?
Thank you. Do you want to look at this, this? Just looking at the size of the, the plot for a hundred and ninety-two units, how small it is compared to the other two, and their units are a lot less, and they're a lot, the plots are a lot bigger. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else want to take a shot? We're closing the public portion of this meeting. Okay, now, the commission is going to be given a chance to speak. Each individual commissioner will be able to ask questions, we'll keep going through this till everybody's satisfied. So who would like to be first?
And the question on drainage, the, from my view of this property, like ninety percent of it is going to be paved, that the water is all going to have to drain into this retention basin. If there's city sewage provided here, is that water going to be diverted into the city sewage?
Absolutely not.
Because it's being landlocked, it's just going to sit there?
The, how you design drainage is to detain to the historic levels is for pre-development, so what water runs off now, they're allowed to release that amount of water at the historic points, basically the low spots that it can release at. But you do not put storm water into sewage systems, at least out west. Sometimes back east, they have combined systems, but our system is not designed to handle rain, rainwater other than some incidental impacts, but we do not allow, as a rule, storm water to go into our sewage, you, the wastewater system. Now, are you talking storm drain, storm sewers or sewer sewers? Sometimes people mix those terms, so.
Into the nice place on the other side of the Peavine Trail where they're-
Right, okay, uh, no, we don't-
Discharging it back into the ground.
We don't process any storm water through that plant, that's all wastewater coming from houses and businesses.
Because Anthem had that problem with their retention basin, all the water came down, and they were not provided, or prepared for the amount that came, and it flooded out the whole neighborhood. And I was thinking, if they're talking about the cul-de-sac at the end of Grove flooding, I'm seeing flooding going into this building one. From all, if, the entire five acres is not going, that retention basin is not going to hold the water off of five acre, the six acres. I don't, I just don't see it.
Okay, that's, that's the job of their engineer to design it accordingly. And my job to review that and make sure it gets done.
Let me speak just a moment about that. Projects like this, all of the drainage is designed by civil engineers, it's stamped by engineers, it's checked by an engineer. That doesn't mean they can't make a mistake or have a problem because they're human beings. Excuse me, but a lot of care is taken in the development of projects like this for containing the runoff water because of the drainage issues that have occurred in Elkhite County for many years. And so the storm water will be retained on this property and then released at the same flow that it is being released now. In other words, waterfalls, it runs off, the way this is designed is to detain the water and release it at a manageable level so that it can run out in the current drainage system. That's just part of developing a site like this. Am I correct?
Correct, and if I could add, the offsite waters, they, they're not required to detain those, the, the water, they're required to detain the, the rainfall that hits on the property.
Correct.
But the offsite water, they are required to transmit those flows through the property and release them where they historically released. They may be able to reroute that as they need to for parking lots and things like that, but the release point is, you try and stick as close as you can to the historic release point of those.
Water runs on at a certain place, and traditionally, it runs off in a certain place, and then a new project, you try to maintain all of that so that it's all contained on the site and released in its traditional point.
And, and I think that's a good point to also realize that, especially with drainage, we're bound by the data we have, so when you're looking at millions of years of rainfall, and we have a hundred years of rainfall data, you know, we do the best we can, but sometimes we're limited, and you get those big storms that occur once every five hundred years when you've only designed for a hundred-year storm, and it overwhelms everything.
Well, I've lived in Arizona for over thirty years, and so far, I've seen at least three five-hundred-year floods, and I always wondered how they calibrated all of that.
Exactly. It's actually a percentage chance based on the data we have, but again, when you, my personal opinion is, that data is somewhat limited too, so, and weather's always changing, so. And sometimes you can roll a seven three times in a row, so.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to be next? Anybody else?
I have a question for Jason on fencing, if we can go back to it?
Yes, sir.
The, I'm looking at the six-foot chain link fence and possibly a six-foot wall, but on Ms. Foley's side of the property, we're talking six-foot chain link, and then a three-foot high block wall to deter headlights from going onto her property.
The parking screen wall would be on that side as well, and I don't believe she spoke to the issue of wanting a wall versus a fence, but if there'd be a three-
Okay, I just noticed that it's, it's printed in here, you know?
Right, no, it's, they would be required to do a three-foot screen wall to screen, it's basically to screen vehicle lights, and you're correct, a lot of big trucks are higher than that, but that's the requirement of the code.
Thank you.
I have a question for Commissioner McCafferty, and then I may like to redirect to Jason. You had a good catch there about the UDO or general plan. Could you repeat that, please? What section you quoted?
Well, it would be within the, hold on, it's right here. Page sixteen of the UDO, or, excuse me, page sixteen of the general plan. It has to do with target strategies on develop, on-
Might speak into the microphone they're having.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's on, it starts on page fifteen and sixteen, and it's in specifics about the target strategies to use when deciding, how do we best use our land in the community cores?
Okay.
And it basically gives us four strategic processes to think about when doing it, and some of those include, in element two, revising the UDO to specifically talk about what properties are appropriate on the edge of the identified cores. And are they appropriate to protecting the neighborhoods with larger lots?
Right, and you mentioned transition as well, wasn't that included?
Right, transition. Well, when I read this, I, when, just by the fact that someone would include what are appropriate, you know, projects or property use for the outer sides of the core areas, to me, it's, I easily interpret as there, there needs to be a transition. And I kept looking in the UDO, trying to find out if there, and there was nothing. And then unfortunately, general plan doesn't even really address transition well enough, in my opinion. But it does say that we should, the city or the Planning and Zoning Commission or a combination of both should revise the UDO to specifically address, in my opinion, transition. Do you agree with that?
Chair and Commissioner, I, okay, a couple items here, let me tackle it in piece by piece. In my professional opinion, I believe the general plan itself should be amended to provide transitional strategies in regards to land uses in a general concept. The, the zoning code, we could probably put some loose language in there, but it's very cut and dry, very black and white. We need to elaborate on, we need more zoning districts with more variation in them so that we can provide actually transitional zoning districts, perhaps low-density residential projects, low-density multifamily, and high-density. This is clearly a high-density project. If we had a low-density zoning district for multifamily in the code, it could be recommended, hey, we don't like this PDE request, you should utilize the low-density zoning for multifamily in the code, do condominiums or, or attached townhomes, something of that nature, rather than three-story stacked apartments. I, that's, to me, that's the bridge between the two. The general plan should speak at more length, and that would probably be on the list for, we need to elaborate that, than rather than just throw some, you know, three sentences at it, we should probably talk what that means, and the general plan. And then we'd use the zoning districts that we have accordingly. The, the, the UDO is not a, a visionary planning document, it's a technical document, so it's difficult to kind of talk about transitions, we should do that in a general plan.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Can I ask that we put this off into July instead of the June thirteenth to give?
That would be something that I think we can bring forward to the commission. Would you all like to push this into the July meeting as opposed to rushing up to the next available time to meet? Part of that, in my opinion, would be decided by the fact that the applicant or their representatives are not here, um, taking the time to deal with this.
Chair, if I may elaborate a bit, there is a member of the project team here in attendance tonight, but has chosen to be here as a citizen and not a member of the project team.
He did say that at the start of the meeting.
Just for the public record, in case there's any inclination that we held a public meeting and discussed the item without the applicant, president, member of the noted project team is here, that's all I need to say to that. In regard, so that I think staff would make a recommendation that we push it to July in light of the numerous comments here tonight that have gone unaddressed, I don't think eight days is enough.
Just, just a point, the first Tuesday in July is July the third.
And I think Alex has asked us to let him know we're not going to have enough for a quorum.
So we may want to have it on the tenth.
Which would be the regularly scheduled council meeting night.
Can we pick something besides Tuesday?
As long as we're doing a date specific in the recommendation, it does need to be date-specific and time-specific, of course, it would be six PM in this room. I, generally, we're confer with the clerk's office that the room is available because it could be booked for other things besides council and PNZ. We could say, I don't, Alex, do we, sorry. We have two cases tentatively scheduled for PNZ on July third, correct? And this would be the third, well, the fourth one, well, it depends, if we don't have the special meeting on next week, we'd have to take the food truck court, which is the next item on the agenda, to that same, so it'd be the four. But I don't anticipate a big discussion on that one.
Okay, so when is the next scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting?
The next regularly scheduled meeting is July third, twenty eighteen.
Okay.
I, in my professional opinion, I, at this rate, we are not ready to go forward next week.
I wouldn't want to do it sooner than that, it's just the July third date.
Yeah, what happens if not everybody's here?
I, okay, for what it's worth, I think this has been a very benefi- beneficial discussion. I don't think anything that's been said by the neighbors has not gone, has gone unheard, I think it's been all heard. You've got on record with all of your comments, those are already in the ears of the commissioners that are here. If you can't make it because of a holiday, you're already on record, I think it's really clear.
Oh, no, I meant the commissioners.
Oh, the commissioners, we have to have at least four of them to have a quorum to vote. I'm not certain what their schedules are yet, we're still, we were actually just working that out now.
I'm available on the third, if we're going to be, if we're going to have-
I'm available.
I'm available.
Any of you chicken out will come hunt you down. Okay, so let's, let's move it to the July third regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the two items that were under discussion for this meeting.
At six PM in council chambers.
Yes.
I just want to be very specific.
And these will be action items at that time, correct?
Yes, we, Chair, we can have some general discussion reconciliation of all these items with the applicant statement if they are here, and then, yes, you can take action to make recommendations to council.
Okay.
And we're scrapping the meeting on the thirteenth?
Yes.
But we're go for the third.
We are go for the third. Okay, so everybody's had a shot at all of this, I'm going to speak very briefly about some things here. One, I think the density on this project is, is ridiculous. Two, I have a great concern about egress and access. I think the buildings need to have some work done on them. If I lived close to this thing, I would be sitting out there not real happy with it myself. I think there needs to be a six-foot-high block wall on the west side of the property. I'm a horse owner, and I certainly like and enjoy having people enjoy my horses walking by, but I don't think I would want to be responsible for some unsupervised small children being able to get their hands through the fence, and a horse being a horse would certainly like to eat something out of that hand. I have a concern about that, so I think there needs to be a block wall on that west one from front to back. There's some amenities that, that I think we're giving away a lot and not getting much in return. There was some discussion in the points here about infrastructure being brought up, the street, city sewer and water, and that the city would chip in some money to help support this for future development. In my opinion, the developers should pay for all of it because they've tried to double what this land was designed to support to begin with. Couple of comments, there, I hear this a lot in these zoning meetings. Nobody wants to see a bunch of stuff happen next to their house, I get that, I live here, I understand that. Chino Valley needs to develop at a controlled pace with good development coming in here. Chino Valley needs to develop at a controlled pace with good development coming in here. Otherwise, we're not going to exist as a city anymore, and I kind of like this place, so I would, I, if you don't like what's going to happen to the property next door to you, this is my personal opinion, you should buy that piece of property and obtain control over it. If for some circumstance you can't, then you should be here talking like you folks are here tonight. The town needs development, you got the cart, the chicken, the horse, the egg, however you want to put it together. If an industry comes here, and it could be a really good industry that's not impactful to the environment, but if there's nobody here for them to hire to go to work in their business, they're not coming. The school system has to be up to speed, the city has to have some infrastructure and the ability to expand. I'm not interested in this place becoming Prescott Valley, moved there in nineteen seventy-nine, saw lots of development, built quite a few homes there myself. It's a good place, they handled their development nicely, really wouldn't want to see that happen here, but I do believe that we need development, we need businesses to come here. This town cannot stay a bedroom community for Prescott and get an extra grocery store and have paved roads and all these other things that people come in and say they want, but don't want to take any of the bad stuff that goes with it, so to speak. So I'm going to get off my soapbox, everybody's had their shot, I just took mine, so I'm going to move on.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I may not be here July third. I wasn't supposed to be here tonight, but my trip's been delayed two times already. So for what it's worth, it doesn't look like I'll be here, but for trees, you mentioned, I'm a tree person, those who know me. I, trees have been growing on my property, I haven't been on my property for twenty years. I have cedars, I have cypress, and I have Austrian pine, and they're not going to get one foot a year. So you can talk all about greenery as some type of buffer, but not for you, not while you're living, okay? So I, once again, I'm a tree person, but it isn't going to happen. Uh, I'm very concerned about compromise. Prescott allocated five thousand units for water for their major northern expansion. The developer came in for ten thousand, and believe me, I've worked as a city planner, park planner, county planner for thirty years. All compromise, seventy-five hundred, but that's what we wanted with seventy-five hundred, we're just throwing out ten thousand. So, uh, you're going to have to speak up. Uh, traffic study, I think one of our commissioners made a very important point here. Uh, you know, you could study it all you want, but there are going to be issues, and so are you ready to live with them? And, uh, I, and Commissioner McCartney brought up an important point, transition. This is a transition area for land use compatibility, and, uh, if I were, you know, a developer, you know, I'd go for the cheaper property and want to build, and I think this is the American way, uh, everybody should make a profit. I mean, that's why we're all here, we all have to eat, but the question is, I think we should go, if we're buying a property, know what we're buying and work within our budget to develop that property, and that's the same as getting a job. You're not going to go ask an employer, I need fifty thousand dollars, when he only is offering twenty-five thousand, well, I need fifty thousand to buy my special sports car, or I'm not going to work for you, but you got to take me. So it's just like, okay, so I'm not going to be here, look, Mister Chairman, evidently, but if I am, uh, you'll have my vote.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item six B., which is a discussion item. Consideration regarding a request for a conditional use permit for one point three-eight acres of real property located approximately point two-five mile north of northwest corner of Center Street and State Route eighty-nine intersection. At two forty-six North State Route eighty-nine, the request of the C U P conditional use permit is to allow a food truck court on a commercial light zoned property. Jason?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, um, this item as well, as you can tell on the agenda, will need to come back before you, we'll, we'll just, likely ask you to continue it, we won't, we can't take action on it tonight. This room is pretty easy, you can almost, if we had windows on that back wall, you'd be able to see it. Just, uh, just north of us, we've got the old abandoned fire station, and then just beyond that is the building, the retail building that has the tax company in it, uh, many, I think, tax, I think, Mister, there he is, he's right here, the applicant is here tonight. Um, as you may know, we had the five thousand food truck out there for some time, um, and then we had an application for the Korean barbecue Tiger Express to come in. Uh, she had been, uh, working with us for some time, trying to find a location, she'd been at Olson's Grain, had poor visibility from the road, wasn't getting the business she wanted, and was having trouble finding a place to locate, because we had been looking at food trucks, we've got several of them in town, and they're, um, informally interpreted as an accessory used to a primary business, like, you know, you've got one parked out in front of Ace, or if Safeway were to allow it, we'd allow one in front of Safeway as an accessory, just one truck. Um, we have determined through legal counsel, when you have the trucks start to cluster on the same property, they become what we call a food truck court. We don't have it explicitly defined in the UDO yet, again, it's on the list of updates. However, we do, have looked at it, so food truck court is really like outdoor retail sales, almost like an outdoor swap meet, in fact, they have food trucks at swap meets. Um, but we have the business of the truck occurring, as you can see in the picture. People, uh, interface point of sale is through a window, they're standing outside, they order their food, they take their food, they go eat it outside or take it to go. Um, in this case, uh, the property that's located just north of us, and I'll go through all the slides, um, well, food truck court essentially provides a centralized location for food trucks to cluster. There is some perception that, as opposed to really being competing with each other, they kind of generate a hub of activity, and they associate themselves with a place to go get food, and then people can select which truck they want, almost like the food court at the mall, just outside. Um, they're considered small businesses, uh, they'll provide outdoor seating generally, little picnic tables, things that they can fold up and put away, uh, when they close up shop, because they leave, they don't want to leave the stuff outside, because somebody could steal it or vandalize it. So it's kind of more portable furniture, uh, there's trash receptacles that need to be there, everybody knows how windy we are, so we need to really be careful with the trash, because it flies all over the place, and in this case, would be flying into the eighty-nine. But this, uh, the five thousand truck was a really good neighbor, unfortunately, they've left, uh, they moved on. But the Korean barbecue truck is parked outside, you may have seen it, uh, on your way in today, so she's operating there. Uh, the owner is interested in having up to three trucks on that parcel. As you can see, the staff is looking at, maybe only thinking two can fit, I'll let the applicant speak for himself on where he thinks he could place the third, we wouldn't want it in the parking area, because he needs the parking for the business and the trucks. Uh, we want it on that kind of concrete slab that's out front. So, again, it's got designated area for customers, I think, you can thank Alex for the vibrant graphics to help keep us awake this late. Let him run with it, have some fun. We've always looked to make sure that there's restrooms on site, uh, not just for the customers, but for the people that work in the trucks, even though they don't generally open all day, they open for peak business hours, I'm not getting Korean barbecue at eight A M., I'd get it for lunch. That there's at least ten feet of space between the trucks to provide some room and parking and maneuvering areas, and then, of course, we'll need parking spaces for the customers. In this case, the site has all of those, because the bathrooms within the retail building are available for use by the food truck customers, so they're really the kind of meeting all the points that we were looking at. Here's the subject property, you can see we're sitting in the room just to the south of that. It's a little green space there, right off eighty-nine, so it has excellent access to the highway. This is the zoning, it's commercially, it's a commercial light zoning. So, the reason why this is a C U P is that the zoning ordinance provides a couple provisions. One, as the zoning administrator myself, I can approve a temporary use permit to allow the site to operate as a, if you will, a food truck court, uh, for up to two weeks. Um, after that, it expires, anything beyond that really requires council approval to go into more or less perpetuity as a food truck court. So, that said, we have filed, had the applicant file as a C U P rather than a T U P. I've already approved a T U P, and then I approved another T U P for the Korean lady's food truck court. And she no longer needs that, because she's the only operator on the site, so she's really, right now, operating under the accessory interpretation, if you will, so anyhow, uh, the gentleman that's here tonight, who owns the tax business, is still interested in courting a couple other trucks to locate there, um, on that vacant concrete pad. It used to be a building, I think it burned down years ago, and never got rebuilt, so they're using the kind of like the, the pad, if you will, for the food truck courts to locate on. Um, this is Alex's fine job at creating a site plan, uh, we have the project data, uh, the first floor building, the first, the two one-story buildings, and then the food truck court area. There's, based on the aerial data of this, or the time it was taken, the trucks aren't shown, but I can use the little mouse here and tell you that the five thousand truck had been located here, a long ways this way, with the short end of the truck, the back of the truck facing out to the eighty-nine, and then the Korean barbecue truck was right here, long ways, and then that left like this kind of cool little seating area here. It actually kind of arranged out pretty nicely, I've seen a lot of food truck courts. Um, the parking is here, the bathrooms are over here, um, so that all works out. Uh, the applicant's asked for three trucks, um, not quite certain how they'd all fit, depending on the size of the trucks. If there were the little ones like hers's, they could fit, if there were big ones, I'm not quite sure, I could get them all there. We wouldn't support the use of any of the parking or maneuvering areas for the location of the trucks. Um, that said, it's a pretty straightforward application, again, we can't make a motion tonight, but it'll give you some time to think on this until the July meeting, we'll have to continue it. Um, fortunately, that won't interrupt her operations in any way. The placement of this, any prospective food trucks, uh, could be done through temporary use permit, through myself, until that time, more or less, if you were to get someone interested in the property, so they should be good to go. We do have a recommendation that we limit it to two trucks on site, because it really seemed to work out well. I just don't see yet, and I'll let him address, again, the, the P N Z commission, that I, how the third truck would look, kind of crammed on that little site, but, uh, this would be our first food truck court. You know, we had a, uh, study session last year for a different site, didn't necessarily go all that well. But this is a different site, and each site is individually based on, you know, its merits, and we are actually supportive of this here. I'd rather see a couple trucks clustered together with a kind of cute little seating area. If, as long as it's well-maintained, the applicant's proven to be a really good steward of the site and keeping it clean, I don't have a bunch of paper napkins and plates flying around on the highway. And, uh, it provides, you know, a place for these to congregate, and it's, it's, we're getting more and more growth pressures. I will let you know that the state has passed a statute recently, uh, that would be, take effect in August, that significantly reduces the restrictions that we can actually place on food trucks. It didn't address the issue of courts, food truck courts, specifically, it was the food trucks, and they can more or less go anywhere they want to on commercially zoned property. So, you know, I've reviewed this with legal counsel, uh, considering the application precedes that, the impact of that ordinance, we'd rather just keep it clean, get council buy-in and P N Z buy-in for the C U P if you're interested. Um, and then it takes out any ambiguity about whether a court is, is addressed through the House bill that was passed. So, that said, I, uh, staff's recommendation would be to, uh, request a continuance to the July third, uh, regularly scheduled date for recommendation on the council.
Anybody have any questions, just briefly?
I just have a comment, oh, go ahead.
Um, looking at the site, half of it is open space. If the applicant at a later date decided to pave that, put in parking and another pad, well then, more food trucks courts would be.
Uh, Chair and Vice Chair, it hasn't been discussed doing any onsite improvements, other than the utility connections required for the trucks. Um, if, I would suggest that they probably have to come back to amend their C U P, it would be a pretty easy process.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Jason, you just had one point, barbecue is good at eight A M., by the way.
Okay, well, Chair, Commissioner, uh, that was just an opinion.
Commissioner Bacon has a.
Not trying to design the project for the applicant, I know you've looked at it as well, but I'm always looking for something, how to, he can get another business on the site to help him. Couldn't there be parallel parking spaces, uh, as you come in? Because there's so much maneuvering room there, you only need twenty-four feet of backup room, and it looks like you could fit at least two more par- parallel parking spaces along that northern edge.
Uh, Chair and Commissioner, I'll let the applicant speak for himself, uh, he's really done a service for the woman that needed a place to locate her small business, she had so much trouble, um, as I understand, they don't really generate that much rental income. Um, and so the idea of doing hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars of site improvements really didn't probably measure out well with that. Um, I'll let him speak to it, if you don't mind.
No, I, I mean, just the existing. The existing, I'm not saying adding existing, it's just, looks like you could, at least, uh, even if they're not marked, you could park three parallel parking spaces there and still have adequate room to come in and out.
You know, good point, Commissioner Bacon, I think we can take that as a takeaway from this tonight's meeting, and I can address it after I've worked with the applicant and the town engineer on how we could configure the drive aisles and parallel parking. Parallel parking is a different ballgame, and people probably, if that place got pretty full, they'd just park in the dirt anyway, so, um, I mean, you know how it works.
I'm just trying to give the fellow another, uh, food card.
I think staff would be, could be easily supportive of a third card, as long as we found a good place for it, uh, that's all.
Any other comments?
Are there any discussions going to be held at that next meeting as to the condition of this area, or should we do that tonight?
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, in regards, we can, we can have an open discussion tonight, the applicant's here, it's been publicly noticed. Oh, you did, okay.
I walked it, there's one hose spigot, it's got a Y on it now, so whoever moves in next gets the other half of the Y from Tiger Barbecue.
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, they're, they're not even based on, uh, Environmental Services at Yavapai, they're not supposed to be using, uh, residential-grade hoses to provide water to these properties, so.
Now, she's got a garden hose running to it, now.
No.
If they have a permanent connection, they can go fill up their walk, their, their freshwater tank with the hose, but they cannot permanently connect to their, uh, their food.
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, we haven't, we haven't actually had the applicant introduce himself yet, I will state that you can't use a Home Depot hose to fill your freshwater tank, that's, they can use that hose to spray off the site, like the concrete.
Well, it's being done now by the, they did it there.
Environmental Services is aware of it, she's, they're routinely inspected, she knows.
The other thing is the power, she's presently using a step-down from a thirty amp to a one-ten and a regular-grade extension cord? Is that going to be made into some kind of an improvement, because there's four spots in that box, but only two of them right now?
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, very, very good point, they're not allowed to permanently connect to power, uh, they're mobile food vendors. They, they need to be provided, uh, power pedestals where they can more or less plug in.
Okay, now, there going to be any improvements to that actual pad and the walkway on the north side of it, leading up to the pad?
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, I'm not aware of any additional improvements proposed with this application.
In walking the property, myself as a handicapped individual, it is unsafe, and it is unusable by anybody in a wheelchair, a walker, or anything along that line in its present condition?
Chair and Commissioner Armstrong, I'm not aware of the ADA requirements for accessibility to food trucks. I think it's an excellent point, and it's within your purview through a C U P to require ADA accessibility to the pad.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Would the, uh, applicant like to step up to the podium?
All right, uh, my name is Bruce Eldridge, and I own that, uh, myself and the bank owns that property there on the highway. Like Jason stated, you know, we, the, they approached me about putting their food cart on there. The five thousand, you know, uh, came up, came up to me and said, could I do that, and I said, I didn't see any reasons. We went through, uh, licensing and everything, no, no problem at all. The Korean barbecue was looking for a home, at that time, I didn't know anything about food courts versus just having another cart, so I approved her, and then this is why we ended up here, because I have two on the property now. We did do improvements already to the property, that pedestal is a new pedestal, uh, approved by the, the town, um, and they reviewed everything. I had gravel placed between the asphalt parking and the actual concrete, um, so there were, people weren't going to be walking through the mud or anything like that during the rainy season. I, I looked at the site, um, I, three, three carts can go there, um, is this a laser? Yeah, I bet it is, so.
The mouse is the pointer, so it shows up on the video.
Sure, okay, the mouse, okay, so, so, one of the things with the food carts is they, they're not permanent, so sometimes they need to take their carts out, and they'll go to an event someplace. So we always have to allow for them to hook up and get their, their unit out, all right? So what I was looking at was the way the five thousand was right here, and he hooked up and he would pull out this way, okay? Uh, Karina's sitting right here, um, and she actually can back it out right here, or hook around and come around through there. And the third one would be on this side right here, and again, she's, I, I will have her move further over here. There's plenty of room there to back in and put a pickup truck and pick up this one and pull it right straight out, so there's plenty of room to get that third one right here. This is an old concrete, it's all busted up, um, I, and understanding about the handicap there. Potentially, we can do something right in here with a, a sidewalk, okay? Uh, there's not a lot of money here, uh, I'll be honest with you, they pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, is what they pay. It's not, they don't make a lot of, they don't make a lot of money, it's mostly, I had this empty concrete slab, and I thought it'd be a good thing for the food court, okay? Uh, we all already dropped over fifteen hundred dollars to put the pedestal electric in right now, okay? So, that's why I wanted to move the three, because it just makes more sense financially for me, especially if I got to do the improvements, like a sidewalk from here, and then we could designate one or two of these in here for handicap parking, not a problem. My trash receptacle is over here, I've just had it upgraded to a locking one, uh, because I'm, I'm aware of the crows, okay? When it was my accounting office, there wasn't a lot of food in there, but there is food in there, so it's a locking one with a bar that keeps it closed, okay, and they have access to that. This building right here has two handicap bathrooms on it, in it, and so that's, and they have keys to that building, so they can open it up for their customers. they have keys to that building, so they can open it up for their customers or for themselves when I'm not, when I'm not open, okay? So, those are the things that we already have there. Um, I'm excited about it. I think a food court would be kind of cool in the town. I know the town people that work here are excited about being able to walk over to get something to eat there, so, okay.
Any questions for the owner? Thank you, sir.
Okay. And the concrete, a concrete ramp, it's relatively low cost to bring it from one across here like that, okay? We're not gonna do it over here at all, um, and, cause it doesn't make sense to do that, but it would be a concrete pad here with a couple handicap parking spots right there. All right, so, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna open the public portion of this meeting for this item only. Yes, ma'am. Step up to the podium and state your name.
My name is Anna Myslowick. I actually own a food truck in this town, although you've probably never seen it. Um, it's not ever been set up in town. We do events, caterings, things of that nature. If anyone's been into Prescott Valley, you've seen it set up at Sidekick Saloon. Um, I have several concerns about this. Uh, we also discussed a food court at one point in time, and we're given several restrictions by the town that it would not appear have been given the same to this owner. Um, we were told we could not have an outdoor seating area due to things flying away. Is that no longer the case? Um, who is going to enforce these trucks moving? There's a town and county permit ordinances for health permits that require these trucks to be moved to dump gray water tanks, to refill with fresh water. You've already brought up the point of hoses. This, these trucks that have been parked on these locations, as well as the other trucks in town that are no longer here, have never moved. They come and they sit for weeks and months on end. I can guarantee you those ordinances of dumping gray water tank and refilling with fresh water are not being followed. So, who's gonna enforce those in this situation? If you're putting trucks there permanently, and he's not providing them those amenities, what's gonna happen? They're gonna dump their gray water on the cement, they're gonna refill with garden hoses, they're gonna permanently attach to the one spigot that's there and put splitters on it, the very same way they are right now. We have se- have had several trucks in this town, including Lucky Dog across from Safeway. Not one time have I seen that truck move. She's not set up to permanent septic or permanent sewer dumps. She's not set up to permanent water filling. What makes this any different? He mentions bathrooms. So, do the customers have to come to us as a food truck and get a key to go use the restroom after hours? Or are you going to limit the hours that those food trucks can operate based on the business hours? ADOT already told us that we could not use a larger location due to traffic impacts. Our location had a right-hand designated turn lane, as well as a large driveway for large semis to pull in and out. They told us that wasn't adequate because of the intra- increased traffic. What makes this any different? Why would they not have to apply by these same rules as what we had been told and were unable to meet at the location that we had proposed?
Thank you. Anybody else like to step up and speak?
Better, uh, than public view. What was that first meeting we had? I'm gonna get the chair to ask if anybody's better.
Let me finish the public portion of the meeting, and then we can answer some of the questions.
Okay, all right, okay.
Have a seat, thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to speak on this subject? The public portion of the meeting is closed for this item. Jason, would you maybe want to address a few of these things?
No, the, uh, the member of the public that spoke made several very good points, which are all correct, in regards to the requirements for, uh, dumping their gray water, getting their fresh water, all of it, and using, the use of a, uh, established, approved commissary. Uh, but a lot of those points are actually regulated by Yavapai Environmental Services. Um, we don't really have an arm of the town that would do that sort of enforcement, because they're recorded, they're supposed to track their movement and notify them if they change locations. Um, I think she made a lot of good points. They shouldn't be using a garden hose, for sure. Um, I actually advised the environmental services person, and when I saw him last, that I was concerned what that hose is being used for. Like I said, it should be used to spray off the patio, that's about it. Um, so, I think they're all valid concerns. I know that she's been, uh, the Tiger Express. Uh, really, this isn't about Tiger Express or the five thousand truck, this is about food trucks in general. Um, so, uh, if there's site improvements that we believe are necessary, like in regards to ADA, uh, approach, and the use of, of, uh, electric and power needs to be done in a correct way, um, I guess we'll have to, I don't know how the mechanism is of monitoring their, how their day-to-day functions. We don't necessarily have code written that I could cite them for. It would be a violation of, the Health Department would need to come out here from Yavapai and issue a citation or fail them on their routine inspections, which, they can do those, they're usually every, what, six months or a year, but they can do them more often if they have problems.
Is walking as we want?
Yes, that's, if they need to, and he's aware that, um, the last inspection, I don't believe went all that well for the Tiger Express. But again, we're telling you Tiger Express, cause we're telling you the story of this food truck court, but she may go away tomorrow, and it could be any other truck the next day. The five thousand truck, uh, received glowing reviews from the Environmental Services that I'm aware of, so hopefully they're using the property the way they should, but they've moved on. Um, in regards to the, I'm not sure which food truck court she was referring to, we've had interest in two sites. Um, they were different sites, they didn't have business, well, one had, was behind Sunshine Vapors, which went to council for a study session. Um, not Sunshine Vapors, they were gonna move with, uh, to a new location, it had a little Kwanzaa building in the back. That one had a lot other, a lot of other issues. ADOT has not weighed in with concerns on this specific site. Um, they weighed in, there was concerns with the other two sites we've looked at. One did not have a, uh, commercially operating business, or, uh, they need a lot of improvements to this weird split drive that had fencing running right down the middle of the access point. It was very strange. Um, I, it's not on the agenda tonight. Um, and in regards to outdoor seating, we have not restricted either of the two sites I looked at by saying they couldn't do outdoor seating. We simply cited the same concerns I said tonight about, uh, containing trash.
Yes, you did.
No.
Yes, ours is down next to custom towing. You guys told us we could not have outdoor seating because you were worried about paper plates and napkins flying away.
First things first, I don't approve the CUP. I'm staff, and I make a recommendation, and we had only had a feasibility meeting, you didn't formally apply, and you guys never came back. So, if we would've worked through it...
You couldn't do it.
I don't decide whether you can or can't do something, the council does, and that was explained to you in the process. So, I don't mean to be, sound curt, but we went through the process step by step and carefully with them. That site had a lot of other issues that we were concerned about.
Okay, I would make a suggestion that, in the time that we have between now and the, when we can make some action on this, that maybe there could be some discussion between you and the property owner and the building department, cause I think they probably have a few little bit of jurisdiction items there, to come up with a cohesive plan to improve the site to where it could be reasonably considered safe for a place to park food trucks? Is that something we could do?
Certainly, Chair, we can confer with, I'll confer with our building official, and, and we'll do a site visit to decide what needs to be done.
I think there's been some good points brought up, that maybe people didn't think about too awful much, and so now we've got an opportunity to improve what we got here.
Okay.
I would also encourage you folks, maybe, to go back and try again.
It, honestly, sir, it's not a matter of not trying again, it's a matter of the improvements that we can make to the building to satisfy what the town was requiring us to do, which is way above and beyond what any food truck could possibly achieve or support.
Okay, so, because...
They wanted it to be a much more permanent structure and permanent situation than what we were asking for Phase One to be.
Okay, so, without knowing anything about it, I just noticed that Jason and you communicated, and maybe you could go back and communicate again and see if there's something could be worked out?
Good, good.
Got a question?
No, I, I would implore the rest of the, the council commission here to, to take a trip out there and walk that property, as I did, and also, would people out in the audience, please go by and look at it and give us your concerns, if there are any.
That's good advice. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, I think we should move forward off this item, and we'll talk about it more in July.
And, and Chair, can we get a motion for the continuance to, for a public hearing on July third?
We'd entertain a motion and continue this item for the next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to so, uh, suggest a motion to, uh, that this item be continued until the July third meeting of the Planning Commission.
I'll second. I have a discussion thing first. Should we include items eight A and eight B in this motion?
If you've not already made the motion, I'm sorry, eight A is, I don't have the report in front of me. Uh, is that the, uh, last?
That's the apartment.
I, I would, certainly you could, I, I think you might want to make a motion to continue each item separately.
I think that's a good idea. So, I'm gonna ask you to amend your motion.
Okay, I would like to, uh, propose a motion for item B, uh, to continue this item, item A first?
Yeah, item A and then item D.
Okay. Uh, for consideration possible action, uh, continued until July third commission meeting for, uh, uh, the apartment project. Uh, real, should I read the whole thing?
No, just read, I think items eight A and eight B will cover it.
Eight A and eight B, so I, so make a suggestion, a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we want to take the two discussion items, eight A and eight B, and move them to the Ju- regular meeting of the July meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm getting tired.
That's public.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, we moved it to the next meeting. Will that satisfy the paperwork? Okay, so we're gonna come to the item nine, which is public comments. I'm gonna read this wordage that they provide for me so conveniently. Call of the public is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any issue within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call of public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study, study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, and a decision at later date, or responding to criticism. So, in other words, you guys can talk to us about it, but we can't answer you until sometime in the future. Anybody like to step up?
Jackie Flanagan, eight-nine-two, Adair. Uh, we purchased our home on Adair Drive in two thousand fourteen, and, um, we know the hour is late, so I'll be brief. We have an issue with West Road Two South, as far as the turn lanes are concerned. Uh, at night, uh, the ramp of Two South, West Road Two South, uh, causes the lights to shine so that you can't see the turn signals, and the right turn lane and the straight-ahead lane are on the same lane, in the same lane, which is different than West Two Road North and West Two, uh, Road Three North. So, we'd like to suggest, because it is dangerous when some people don't use turn signals, or maybe turn signaling, and then decide to go straight-ahead on Two South, uh, to the east side, and it is a traffic issue that could cause some, you know, accidents, and makes it difficult for turning left.
Ma'am, um, just a comment, we don't have any jurisdiction over any road business. Um, you might want to take it up, talk to the town engineer, and see if he can direct you to the proper person.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Strickrock, and I have a question regarding your rules and regs about voting. Uh, if someone isn't present, they are not allowed to vote, you do not have absentee votes, or it must be present to vote?
Um, I believe that is correct, but I also think that there might be a thing where they can listen to the meeting from a remote location. Could you help us out here, Jason?